Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Today's Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'd like to remind attendees that this meeting is being aired live and will be recorded for a future broadcast. And if you would kindly join me by rising for the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The disclosure statement, Fred, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I'm sorry, Frank.
Is that disclosure statement?
I'm going to do that right now.
All right.
Pursuant to section twenty of chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the town council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. I'm aware of no condolences this evening. And we can move on to item A, approval of minutes for the council meeting of June twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved second.
We have a motion and a second, and we would need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
I voted since I wasn't here at the last meeting.
No, you have to abstain.
I have to abstain. Thank you. I abstain.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Botes?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven in favors, zero against.
Thank you. Announcements from the president, there are none. We have no proclamations this evening. We will move right to citizen open forum. I'd like to welcome citizens to participate this evening. We appreciate your comments always. I would remind you, please, that we would ask you to kindly identify yourself when you are recognized by the chair and provide your street address. And if you would please confine your remarks to three minutes or less, that would be greatly appreciated. Josh, do we have some citizens in attendance?
Yes.
And do we know if anyone has offered, cares to offer comment?
Yes, I have Samuel Baumgarten raising his hand.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Baumgarten. You may proceed.
Thank you. I'm hopping back from a BCCR meeting and going right back to it afterwards, so I'm glad to be first. Sam Baumgarten, sixty Short Street. I just want to speak about two of the items that will come up tonight. One is to express my support for the ordinance regarding flag raising, which Mr. Chase introduced several weeks back, and I'm glad that we have a process now for creating proclamations and raising a flag when needed, so I hope that will pass tonight. And also, I want to express my support for the new ordinance, which is up on the agenda regarding the NIPS and the banning of the selling of NIPS until a state law will override that and provide for refunds, or not refunds, but deposits on those. So I hope, I know that will not be voted on tonight, but I want to express my support for that as well. And thank you all again for your service and your efforts.
Thank you very much. Do we have further citizen comment?
Yes, Mary Lee.
Mary Lee Hunt? I don't see you, but Mary Lee, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Josh. I just have two things. I'm speaking both as your town clerk and as a citizen of Bridgewater at eighty Austin Street. So the first one, as a citizen, I I support the NIP ordinance, or yes, it's an ordinance. I guess I would like to see a fine for the NIPS instead of just a complete banning of them. I mean, I'm perfectly happy myself to have them banned, but I just assume see a fine for them so that or a refund for them so that we collect money for them and still keep them off the streets. But whatever it takes to get them off the streets, that's what I'm for. And if Bridgewater has to be a leader in that, I'm for that, too. We did it with plastic bags, and I think it'll be a good thing to do for NIPS. Then to the counselors, mostly specifically through you, Mr. President, for a notice that I sent earlier and for citizens, this regards Senate Bill number two, four, eight, nine, which was passed by the Massachusetts Senate on July ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. So you can look it up. This is an ordinance that allows the legislature to do the reprecincting before the towns do it. This makes some provisions that might make it a little more flexible for towns, but it's a simple bill. It's been described as a simple bill that gives some increase in flexibility for municipalities in reprecincting. It's still going to be complicated because the legislature is going to reprecinct before the town does, and it means that we will have to have our reprecincting into them no later than December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we have no guarantee of when we're going to get whatever the legislature decides to do with it, which they will probably start on around October first. So just updating you a little bit on what I've been telling you before. Hopefully, that answers some questions, the one that I had sent out about this legislation, just letting you know that it was happening. So I just wanted to promise to update you on that. That's what that is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hunt. I recognize Pat Neary. Pat?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to say how pleased I am that you are supportive of expanding the administrative code so that the pride flag can be displayed in the future. And thank you all for doing that. I'm also here to say that this NIP ban that is being presented here later this evening is very exciting. Liquor stores in the industry will reject the idea. However, it is their customers and the industry that fuels our litter problem. Mass Package Store Association has talked about cleanup remedies, but it just doesn't happen. If store owners come up with a solid plan, you might reconsider having a ban, but not until that happens. You may also consider changing the effective date from thirty days to one hundred and twenty days when and if this gets passed, and that's to enable stores to use up their inventory. Thirty days is a little short. By the way, these little bottles cannot be recycled. They fall through the sorters. The equipment that the trash people have just can't even do anything with them, so that is really not an option. Four years ago, we added our townwide petition to those being sent by other towns to our state legislators. And unfortunately, that didn't go anywhere. Two years ago, our council unanimously approved and sent a resolution to our state legislature asking that NIPS be added to the state bottle bill. Unfortunately, that didn't go anywhere either. So we have to do something. In two thousand and fifteen, the actual city of Boston passed a lot of bans on sixteen stores, including Seaport and Haymarket Square. We can do that in our little town. There are currently four bills before the legislature that allow a deposit to manufacture alcohol bottles, but you know how long some of these bills take to pass, or they never even happen. We have to do this. This wonderful proposal that will help clean up our town and the planet, we have to work on it. We cannot keep trashing our planet. Let's join the towns of Chelsea, Wareham, Mashpee, Falmouth, that are leading the way. Let's be leaders. And thank you, Counselor Souza and Gallagher, for introducing this.
Thank you very much, Pat.
Okay.
Are there any further comments? Josh, are you aware of anyone else?
Ah, yes, Jeff Daniels.
Very good.
Jeff.
Proceed.
Maple Avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great, thanks. So I just caught the agenda just a little earlier, so a little behind on things, but I heard on the NIPS thing, I just wanted to mention that I support that, not only for environmental reasons, but also because I've heard that there's a link with those and increasing relapse among the poor. So there's more than one reason, I think, to to consider that move. As for the pride flag, I just wanted to remind the council of my prior mention about social psychologists who have shown indisputably that it causes divisiveness for towns to highlight any specific groups, whether that's pride or religious or otherwise. I think that while towns have a responsibility to protect citizens and business rights to promote various groups, that it's unhealthy for the town itself to take promotion of those sorts of things. It always leads to divisiveness. It's not disputed, so I would encourage a town to think more thoroughly through the ways that it can create an inclusive culture that don't involve taking promotional approaches to that type of thing. Finally, I see that Perkins Foundry project is on the agenda tonight. I believe the zoning for that requires at least thirty percent commercial, which is good policy from my view to maintain higher commercial tax revenue compared to the the extra burden that high-density apartments tend to bring. We already have a tough time as a town meeting our school and town funding needs without adding the additional burdens to those that aren't offset by at least as much tax revenue. So I think that the conversations we're having right now will put us in a worse place with, I believe it's fifteen percent commercial, which I don't think is fiscally responsible. So in general, I'd encourage the council and voters to focus on proposals and solutions that reduce burdens, both financial and societal with, while just being fiscally responsible. So that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Do we have further comment?
Yes, Rebecca Cordero.
Yes, Rebecca, hello, and please proceed.
Thank you, Rebecca Flash Cudero, Deerfield Drive in Bridgewater. And I wanted to also speak in favor or thank you and hope that you'll vote in favor of the flag raising ordinance. Thank you also to the counselors. I thank you before for passing the resolution that allowed us to have the flag racing in June because we knew the ordinance couldn't pass quickly enough. Just want to point out that the flag racing was very well received by all of the community, and I know everybody has their opinions on this, but I just have to say that I don't ever think that it's unhealthy to embrace a broad community, and that's what we're doing with the flag racing. So I'm hoping for a vote in favor of that ordinance. In terms of the ban on the NIPS, I'm also in favor of that. I'd like to see them gone permanently, especially when Ms. Neary just told us that, and I didn't know this, I saw a couple of people nodding that those bottles can't be recycled, that they fall through the recycle thing, so the deposit on them and returns. And I don't know how well any of that would work, but my husband and I, we didn't count this year during one of the town cleanups when we did. All we do is probably three quarters of Forest Street in our neighborhood. We didn't count this year. We did count two years ago. We didn't have a cleanup last year that I was aware of anyway because of COVID. But two years ago, I just checked with him and I said, was it three hundred NIPS that we picked up in that little short span? And he said he was, he couldn't remember for sure. It was at least three hundred, and he thought it was closer to five hundred. So we really need to eliminate them, and whatever the strongest language can be in order to do that, I hope that y'all can come to terms with that, probably with Ms. Neary's assistance, because she's, I know, been working on this for a very long time. So thank you for hearing me out, and thank you for everything that you're doing for our town councils.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Cudero. Do we have further citizen comment?
Fred, I have a telephone number. I don't know their name, but they have their hand up.
Okay. Could that person identify themselves?
Hi, it's Taylor Sullivan, two fifty Orland Park.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Hi, so I just, two things. One, I just wanted to support the NIP ordinance. I think anyone that takes, you know, walks through towns, sees, you know, how much, how many NIPS are lying around. So I think that anything that could help lessen that would be a great thing for our town. The second thing I wanted to mention was, while I support the the flag and the pride flag a few weeks back, my only point of caution, and I don't even know if it's really a point of caution, but the only thing that opens up to is, you know, there's going to be other groups that particularly want other flags flown. So what first came to mind for me was the Holocaust Remembrance Day in January. You know, I thought of the Armenian genocide, things like that, is when you open yourself up to, you know, certain groups, you know, going forward, I'm sure there's going to be further push, and I don't know if that's going to become, you know, a lot for the council or how you would handle that. So I just kind of wanted to mention that as well, and then that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor. Do we have any further comment from the citizens?
There's an Alan Hovey.
Right, Alan. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, please, please identify yourself with your street address.
Sure, Alan Harvey, seventy-five Oak Ridge Lane. I'm actually owner of Wine Bear and More across from Home Depot in Bridgewater, been there about twenty years. And as I, I mean, I can appreciate everybody wanting to ban the NIPS, but I would ask the town council to actually think about this, because if we ban them in Bridgewater and the surrounding towns continue to sell them, it's not going to alleviate the problem. The customers are just going to buy their NIPS in the other towns and toss them out the window when they get home. Same places they're throwing them out the window now. The problem isn't the NIPS, it's the people drinking the NIPS and tossing them out the window. So I fully, I mean, I would love to have the state put a deposit on that and and give the town council the time to push that and make sure that the ordinance goes into effect. It doesn't go into effect until after the bottle bill is passed, that would alleviate the problem. I honestly think if we stop selling NIPS or a hundred milliliters in this town, they're just going to go to the pints and the half pints. Most of those are plastic, some of them are glass, so you're going to end up with a broken glass problem all over our streets and sidewalks. I don't think it's going to solve the problem.
Very good. Well, I thank you very much for your comment. Are there any further comments?
I don't see anyone else, Counselor Chase.
All right, thank you, Josh. Seeing nothing further, we'll move to appointments. We do have one appointment this evening. That is for the reappointment of Julie Skulpares to the Town Finance Committee. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve, and second, this would necessitate a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Botes?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you very much. We are moving on to hearings. It is now seven nineteen PM. And the hearing we have scheduled for this evening is petition P dash twenty twenty-one dash zero one one Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts, Inc., DDA Cumberland Farms for a change of beneficial interest and change of officer. The petitioner has requested continuance of this hearing to our meeting on August third. So we will, there's nothing for us to consider this evening in regard to that matter. We do have a license transaction, and that's petition P twenty twenty-one dash zero one four. One Day Entertainment, Larkin Motors Foundation, eight fifty Bedford Street. Larkin Motors Foundation First Annual Charity Car Show, scheduled for August fourteenth with a rain date of August fifteenth between the hours of twelve noon and six thirty PM. I would entertain a motion.
So moved second.
We have a motion and a second, and this will require a roll call vote.
Mr. Vice President, a question for the town manager.
Yes, go right ahead, please.
Mr. Dutton, just from my curiosity, I know that Counselor Chase said there's an address, but I don't see an address on the application. So eight fifty Bedford Street, what exactly is there? And the only reason I'm asking is the approximate attendance is five hundred people, so that's a, that's a pretty big gathering.
No, that's a, that's a good question. The the Larkin Motors is on the corner of, essentially on the corner of winter, you know, it's near Winter Place there, the corner of Bedford and Winter. And that is their location. They also plan on using a lot across the street for parking. I think they've entered into an agreement with their neighbor across the street for some parking. They have worked pretty closely with the police department and the fire department to make sure that that it's a safe environment. There will be a detail on site to to make sure that traffic and pedestrians are separated appropriately. And they're anticipating, they have indicated they're anticipating five hundred people. That's over the six and a half hour timeframe. So certainly not all five hundred would be there at the same time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion among the council?
I've got something, Mr. President. Presumably also that five hundred number might be throughout the course of the day, so it wouldn't necessarily be five hundred people there at any one time. Just want to point that out.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes?
Yeah.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you. We're moving on to presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first is with respect to the proposed Perkins Foundry project to be presented by Edgewood Development Company. Is the presenter available this evening?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. My name's Stephen Meltzer. With me also is Mr. LaRusso. And we are ready when you are.
I think you can go right ahead and proceed. Do you need to share a screen?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful if I could share my screen.
You should be all set.
Okay, let me make sure to pick the right one. Okay. Oh. Okay. So what I'd like to do, I've got a, as you, if you've looked through the the slide deck, if you've got it, I don't know. But there's a lot of slides here, but what I'd like to do in the interest of of the the councils and respecting the council's time is I'm going to run through these very, very quickly and give our overview, and then if there's anything that any council members would like to focus on and and discuss with us, we'll hopefully have a chance to do that. But what we are discussing tonight is the the Henry Perkins Foundry property, which is essentially one eighty Broad Street, and then the little house that's in front of it, one sixty-eight Broad Street, which is also owned by the Foundry. And what what we're talking about doing is redeveloping the property. We've been discussing the issues that surround and the difficulties that surround the property, both from a regulatory standpoint and from the challenges that are presented by the land itself with the town for quite some time now, and with the, and we've been working with the landowners, the Perkins family, for for a while now. I want to sort of give an overview of that. If there's anybody out there who doesn't have the the slide deck and wants to access it, this isn't actually in your slide deck, but this gives you access to it if you go directly to PerkinsFoundry.com. There's a posting up there where you can get a PDF of that, just in case anybody wants to follow along at home. So what I'm going to talk about is the site and the challenges that it that it poses and the difficulties that we're facing, the development options that we see and understand as possibilities out there. What we've developed for our vision of the property, the and the land use limitations, basically the zoning difficulties that that we're going to need help from the town council, the town council and the planning board on, and what we hope to to do as next steps after after our presentation tonight. And and those next steps, and I'll tell you right up front, are really to ask the town council to to refer this to the to their Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board, who we understand is meeting in workshops with zoning professionals to try to work through zoning changes and to include us in that process, but we'll talk more about that soon. So the the site, in case anybody isn't familiar with it, has the Perkins Foundry on it. The Foundry was was founded in eighteen forty-eight by Henry Perkins, and it is still run today by those three beautiful gentlemen in the right-hand corner of that screen. Hundred seventy-three years later, and they are looking at options to wind down their operations and looking for ways to exit the property. And that's where we come in. The site is on the, basically on the on Broad Street on the corner near Spring Street across from the shopping mall. That gives a an overview and an aerial of the site. And as you get closer, you can see that it's the red circle. It is split by the zoning. Right now, it's that little corner, the triangle just north of the railroad line. There are a number of buildings on it. The picture on the left shows us that there's a conglomeration of buildings, and I'll show you in a moment now. It is a conglomeration of buildings that were built up over probably the hundred and seventy-three years that it's been in business with the old house in front, and then buildings were built as they were needed on the site over the years at different points in in time and in regulation as well. So just a couple more areas just to show you what the site looks like right now. And as you could see from the aerial, it does a butt also, the railroad on one side, the the Broad Street on the other and the town river in the back. I'm going to run through quickly just some of the challenges that we're facing with respect to the site, the environmental conditions of the of the land, the environmental conditions of the building, conservation, wetlands and soil conditions, and and the the impact of of those things on our ability and the landowner's ability to develop the property, which leads to the challenges and the things that we're going to be hoping to do with respect to the regulatory aspects of the of the property. So there's something called green sand out there. There's sixty thousand cubic yards of this green sand. That's a lot of material. It's the silica sand with clay binder that they used for castings for their metal parts over the years. They were stockpiling and storing those on site until about nineteen eighty-seven or late eighties, and then they started removing them from the site, but there, as I say, there exists the sixty thousand cubic yards of sand on the property. We're actually working with the DEP and have been for over a year now to find ways to reuse those materials on site in a safe and and appropriate way. So that present presents one pretty big challenge. There's asbestos, friable or non-friable asbestos in the buildings, lead paint, PCB. Um, there's asbestos, friable or non-friable asbestos in the buildings, lead paint, PCB containing ballast. Uh, you know, any host of other materials that are uh, gonna um, provide a. Uh, significant challenge and cost to the demolition of the buildings for anybody who develops it. And then the um. The riverfront further uh, um, diminishes the ability to develop the site. This bordering with vegetated west wetlands. And uh, so that shows the wetland conditions and the uh, site. How it's uh, sort of squeezed down in your ability to use it. And that shows uh, there the um, the sewer easement, which runs right through the property. Uh, which you have to avoid. You can't put buildings on top of that. Um, all causing um, challenges for uh, potential development. Um, increased costs of development, reduced area, reduced flexibility. Um, we do, uh, increased costs in the site preparation because of the materials that are on a site. Increased costs of the, for remediation and demolition of the current buildings. And constraints because of the wetlands and the river area. So. Uh, what we've talked about and what we've looked at, uh, and, and something that, that I'd like you to understand about us is that. Um. That we uh, we per, permit, we acquire permit. Um. Build and operate industrial, commercial, residential and mixed-use properties. So when we first went and uh, looked at this piece of property as a possibility. We, we went through the full range of what could and should be on this site. Um, and if we thought, so you know, w- we, we own and operate. Um, we build, own and operate all of the assets that we um, that we develop. And w- our plan for this as well as for all our other properties is to own them forever. We don't. Uh, permit flip, we don't permit and build to flip, we permit and build to keep. So we take a lot of pride in what we do. But we also understand from that process what um. What can be built and uh, and what can be economically feasible and what um, otherwise is. Uh, is good for a spot based on where it is in a town. Um, and, and so as I said, we went through all possibilities of industrial, commercial. Single-family residential, mixed-use, multifamily residential uh, possibilities for this site. As we do with all, with all of our potential development sites. Um. Uh, and there's just some of the, some of the things we do and own, um, which we um. Uh, we've developed over the years warehouse space, retail space. Uh, restaurant space, uh, flex space. Um. Office space, uh, medical space, so. Uh, we run the gamut and single-family homes as well. And uh, and multifamily and um, and mixed-use. This is a mixed-use project. Uh, that we recently finished building and is uh, nearly eighty percent occupied in um, written the center of town in Walpole, Massachusetts. And just some more photos of that and a list of some of the, the current assets on, in multifamily that we have now. So. W- we took all this knowledge we have and we took the site and we spent, as I said, we've been there for over a year. Um, probably a year and a half now. Um, doing our due diligence on the site, but also doing our due diligence. Um, and in the marketplace and uh, trying to understand as well what the goals that Bridgewater has for this area of town. And we did that by going through all of the different um. Uh. Uh, expert um, product that you've had done over the years, the uh, down to the housing plan, the downtown revitalization plan. And what I've done here, and I'm not going to read through all of them. Um, is sort of pick out some of the concepts from all of those documents. Uh, that have guided us in understanding uh, what may be important for the town. Um, to develop in this area, which we think is really downtown area. Um, and, and how to develop that. Um. Um, most important target for downtown are residents that are either starting their career, retiring. Aging rage from age from thirty-five to sixty-five, education above average. This is all from your downtown. Vitalization plan, purpose of mixed use is to allow for vibrant, walkable downtown with additional small restaurants, retailers and cafes. Um, so. As I'm going to tell you in a few minutes, the problem with this site and, and Mr. Daniels uh, who, who raised um. Some concerns and discussion about thirty percent versus fifteen percent. Our, our um. Gateway issue here is that this is right now currently zoned for industrial. So industrial does not allow mixed use. It doesn't allow multifamily. All it allows is industrial. If we thought that this site could support and um, and would be the highest and best use for this site would be industrial, that's what we'd be building. But we honestly, we don't believe so. We don't believe so based on uh, the market conditions. Because we've got to make money on this, but we also don't believe so because of uh, the goals that Bridgewater has for this area of town. And we understand those goals uh, based partly on the fact that. Uh, we do a lot of work around the Commonwealth and we, we know what everybody's goals are for downtown, but also by reading through all of these studies that you've had done. Which show us that uh. What you really need there or what you really want there is some kind of uh, development that. Um, that sort of ties in the downtown brings um, brings residents who live in town, who can walk to town. Uh, who can walk to, to e- even onsite here, can walk to uh, commercial and retail uh, space. On this site or near this site and downtown. Um, that brings everybody up. Um. And, and the comprehensive master plan draft. Uh, twenty twenty-one um, recommendations, uh, pulled out uh, lots of little tidbits from there. Which sure, sort of guides us. Um, cold like locate housing, shopping and jobs in the air to reduce, reduce single occupancy commutes and support healthy lifestyles, encourage mixed use. Development to attract family-oriented businesses, create additional housing. Balanced land use development with environmental stewardship, you know, that we need to protect the riverfront there. Um. And, and, and I'll, I'll highlight this because I think it's really important um, for the process. And the process that I'm going to ask that uh, we engage in. Partner with developers to ensure that new housing development provides infrastructure and amenities that benefit the community. Um, there's a lot of communities out there that have uh, either. Uh, purposefully or uh, just by accident allowed uh, many old industrial sites like this. To uh, fall into a state of disrepair, become uh, abandoned, condemned and blighted and um. And it really takes effort on behalf of uh, a municipality, um, its boards and commissions. Um, and, and purposeful action um, to make sure that that doesn't happen. And, and what we hope is that w- we can work with you. Provide our understanding from our, our, um, our market-based analysis. Of this site so that we can work together to try and find out what, as I say, will be the highest and best use for this property. Um, both for us, but also for the, the town of Bridgewater. Um. And there's more, and I'll let you look through that. Uh, so. When we did our, our design and our concepts and, and looked at our vision for this property. We thought it'd be great, it would be important to bring new residents into market rate units within walking distance to the downtown. Create new commercial, retail and restaurant space with its own parking near the downtown. Uh, our project because of the investment would, would um, increase new tax revenue. Uh, by over four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually. Um, have a low impact on schools and town services. Uh, we, we, we are thinking one and two-bedroom units. Um, and we have numbers which prove out that uh, that's not going to, on balance, that's uh, going to bring. Few students to the school system, um, and it'll be more than offset by that additional tax revenue um, in the redevelopment. Um, we thought it was important to eliminate and not add to industrial traffic near the downtown. If we were to, to develop this as an industrial project. Um, that would just increase uh, industrial traffic downtown. And um, improvements to the site, remove the old contaminated buildings forever. And permanently clean up and improve the site so that it uh, isn't an environmental issue um, in the future. So. Uh, one thing I want to emphasize is that as we've been working through this product, this project and. The process with the planning board and uh. With Jennifer in the uh, planning department is we've come up with a concept. Uh, but uh, we've gotten a lot of feedback. And w- we are more than willing to um, to adjust. Our concept to fit whatever it is that uh, that we can work out with, with the town of Bridgewater. As to what we think belongs there. Uh, we don't think that an arbitrary number, for instance, thirty percent. Um, is necessarily uh, the way to plan for the future of this site. But we understand that commercial development is important. Um, we've also uh, taken efforts and have obtained um. With uh, the right to purchase some of the adjacent properties, the two houses that are on the northern side of, of what you see here. Um. In uh, one of the houses we actually now own, second house, we have a, a right to buy. Uh, which we would also include in the development and, and that would be commercial. Um, but this is sort of the concept we came up with, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the concept that we end up with. What, what we're looking and hoping to do is. Have the opportunity, as I say, to even get in the door. With a, an industrial zoned back of the property, we don't, we can't even start the discussion in the process with the planning board. Um, so in order to even start that discussion, we need to entertain or have entertained the. Uh, opportunity and, and I'm just going to page through some renderings. Of uh, of, of our vision for, for what might go on back there, but. What we need to do is have that opportunity somehow to have a discussion about. Um, the zoning challenges that we face. As I said, the, the current zoning bisects the property. Um, it's C V D in front and it's industrial being back. Uh, we can't even bring forward an application to have uh, any kind of mixed use. Um, or anything other than industrial in that back parcel unless it's. Uh, rezoned or if we bring a um, a use variance request to the zoning board of appeals. We haven't done the, gone the use variance route uh, based on. Feedback that we've gotten from the planning department and from um, other members in the community. Um, that that's uh. I guess highly disfavored, so we're, we're asking. Uh, you know, a- and I, I perfectly understand that use variances are, are. Uh, can be controversial. Um, so we're asking you as the um, as the uh, body that uh. That promulgates um, zoning bylaws and zoning in town to uh, think about. How this would best be zoned to accomplish the uh, the goals. Uh, for downtown Bridgewater and for us as well. And there's a lot of different ways that that could happen. Um, the zoning map could be amended. Uh, the legis, the legislature passed and the governor signed the changes to the zoning law. Which created this new section three A zone, which is a requirement for certain kinds of funding in town. Um. Uh, and it preserves your ability to continue to get that funding. Um, and it requires that there be multifamily as of right. It does create also a ten percent affordable com- component, which uh. Which w- we would uh, be happy to comply with if, if, if this is a fit for that. Um, as I said before, use variances are also a possibility if, if the, if everybody tells us that's the way you'd like us to go, we'll go that way. Um, do additional amendments. Uh, and I also understand that uh, during the process of um, developing and uh, drafting the new uh, zoning bylaws that are under consideration. Um, there was a possibility of something called an innovation district. Um, that's been used in other communities that uh, very successfully for this kind of a property. Um, and these are just. Stuff to throw up against the wall and see what sticks. We're not here to ask the town council tonight to, to go with anything in particular. What we're actually asking the town council tonight to do, as I said, is. Is allow us to, to discuss this. With the Economic Development Committee. Uh, of the town council and the planning board together and come up with what the best solution is. Um, if it turns out that everybody decides that industrial, this is an industrial, this should stay. Uh, there's not much we'd be able to do about that. Uh, we would then uh, go back to the drawing board, see if there's some industrial. Uh, development that we could make work here. Uh, our analysis right now tells us there isn't. And this property would either stay industrial forever or um, or. Um, may never be redeveloped for any purpose. Um, so as I said, those next steps are, a- and I s- as I understand, there's uh, workshops coming up with. Um, between the E D C and the planning board and your zoning expert. Um. To discuss the zoning changes. Um, and our, our hope and, and request would be that we. Uh, that this. Uh, parcel become part of that discussion. Um, and that uh, maybe from that discussion, uh, recommendation can be made. Um, for a change that can help us uh, move forward with some kind of project out there. And uh, we'd also hope that if, if there's an opportunity for it and, and it's advantageous for everybody that we could be. Included in that process as suggested by uh, some of your experts. Uh, to include developers who actually are uh, involved in the market decisions. Um, with respect to projects like this. Now, I've included a lot of additional information here that you can look through, which talks about us, who we are, uh, but I'm not going to go into that at all. Uh, I'd like to end it there with that request and um. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have with respect to what we've done out there. What we found out there and uh, and what our hopes and dreams are. And I, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Chase, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Melzer. I appreciate your uh, a very thorough presentation and. I think in particular, we're all appreciative of your uh, your flexibility that you've described in terms of. Uh, analysis of the options available to us. Um, I'd like to uh. Seek comment and input or questions from the council members. Uh, if there is anyone who would care to begin?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. George.
Thank you very much, Drew Ute, Mr. Melzer. Thank you very much for the time. Um. I, I do have a couple of questions in regards to the residential component. What demographics are you predicting are moving in and how will you market to them?
But uh. I, I really turned to that um, to the slide that I presented, demographic really is. Um, there's, there's sort of two different people and, and what we see in our apartments in Plainville and our apartments in Walpole. Uh, because this is uh, uh, near the M B T A. Um. Uh, we see a lot of transit-oriented folks who are professionals moving out of the city. Uh, young professionals. Um. Who are dual income earners, who are looking for um, uh, to live in a, in a New England town. Where they can spend their, their nights and weekends. Um, going out for ice cream or grabbing a coffee or going out to dinner. Um, after they take the train or hop on um. Up on four ninety-five or twenty-four to get to work. Uh, and so these are, you know, what we would call luxury apartments, but uh. But they are higher end and they're uh. It's very unlikely that they would. Um, be any kind of student housing. Of course, we wouldn't prevent any students moving in, but uh. The numbers are a little bit higher than that as we see them. And our market study bears that out. We had a complete market study done by. Um, market and appraisal professionals, which we would uh, in order to get appropriate financing for this, we would. We would. We would need. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I hope it does.
Um, it it does in a way, and I I'm probably looking at it more from other projects that have come before. The board um. That have been proposed as high-end. Projects that would not have any, I don't wanna say negative impact, but impact on our infrastructure, both from. An educational perspective as well as public safety. That's not proven to be the case. Um, it's been the exact opposite, so I would. I would just caution if you're if you're going to put that um out there, then. There needs to be some way, and I don't know which way that would be, that you would almost guarantee it, which is which is not. Plausible whatsoever, so um as much as I like the project, I would personally like to see more of a. Um, commercial portion of it, but you know, understanding that within the project itself, it's got to generate enough revenue to support it. Um, I still always have a hesitation of bringing in residential and having it being proposed that. As a high-end demographic draw that it's not going to uh impact. Our infrastructure, which in fact, we have case in point that we've had that in the past, so that's just a little bit of feedback. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. I understand that and and I agree with with. I didn't bring any specifics with me tonight. I didn't want to get too uh um too detailed. But we would um, we were probably, as we went through the process. Um, you know, as I said, the the amount of commercial versus residential. Uh, we had our idea going in, but it may maybe something completely different by the time we're done. Um, and we would we would bring data to help support it and included in that data would be our own experience with our own. Uh, projects, um, and we would also uh welcome. Uh, anybody who in the council or in the community to come see our other projects and just see what kind of work we do and and what we mean by. Uh, by the product we're talking about, but thank you for your comment. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. George and Mr. Melsner. Other further questions or comments from the council members?
Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I thank you for the presentation. Um, I remember being on a Zoom call. With you guys about four months ago with another counselor and with you, and I'm glad to see this is finally coming to us for. Um, a presentation. Seems like, seems like there's a lot of hoops you have to go through to get this started. It just seems. If you're up for that challenge, that's that's great. It just. It seems like a lot of hoops to go through. Um. As far as the industrial piece. As this moves forward, and I do hope that it, and I do think it should move forward for further discussion, at least to the planning community and development committees. For the discussion, but I'd be curious as to what the benefits. Um, are of losing some industrial. Some of our industrial footprint in the town, you know, i- what could go there if we left it all industrial? I mean, what's out there? That we would miss out on, we're not gonna get another. Um, foundry plant in Bridgewater. I don't think so, but I guess what's what's the benefit? Or what's the risk of losing? In our part of our industrial footprint when we have Route eighteen. And um and one oh four, which is, I believe, zoned for industrial. The other thing too is um. There is a piece of property not too far from there. That's for sale and um it got an approved plan. And uh was rejected, but um. That may be a good alternative if things don't go your way. The other thing too, the developer's agreement, um. Those are catch twenty-two's. I mean, we certainly would 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 uh encourage the town manager and town officials to enter into some developer's agreement, but we hate to see. Projects that we'd like to see go forward now be stalled because. You know, the developers agreed to pay for these things and in turn of uh and. Of of doing the project, so those are always a good thing to have, but it can be a catch twenty-two. A question though, timeframe, are you ready to go? I mean, if this were to be approved. You know, three months down the road, are you? Wha- what's your timeframe, I guess?
We're ready to go. Yeah, we're ready to go yesterday.
Okay, that sounds.
We are absolutely ready to go. Yep, um. And. Uh, and with respect to your other comments, again. W- we do industrial and if if there were some industrial that we thought we that could work here. Uh, we would do it, um, and if somebody has a great idea for industrial that will work here. Um, bring it on because we'll do that, but um we haven't been able to. To find, because that would be a lot easier, and as you say, there are a lot of hoops to jump through here.
Yeah.
That is indeed true, and I've been I've been jumping up and down for a long time now, uh, and I'm happy to have this opportunity to finally speak to the town council on it, so.
And keep your eyes on that piece of property up the street.
No.
For sale.
I've been watching, I've throughout the entire, yes, Mr. Gallagher, throughout the entire process, I've I've watched what has happened up there, so.
Okay.
Been a lesson too, so I appreciate.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Um. Are there further comments or questions from the council members?
Uh, yes, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Moore, please go ahead.
Uh, through you. Uh, also, thank you for the presentation. Incredibly helpful. Uh, I'd just be curious, you 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 described this as a match to our downtown revitalization goals. Um, and I think in other conversations, we've heard. That when these sorts of developments are built, they bring the foot traffic that essentially shops in the neighboring area, so the neighboring area. Ends up sort of improving their storefronts and sort of attracting new business. I'd be curious, in your experience in other towns uh where you've done this and you you showed Walpole, maybe as a recent example. Uh, are you seeing that scenario play out where you introduce this sort of residential density? Um, in the area around your property also uh improves. Are you are you seeing that happen?
Um, the the answer is yes, uh. It's difficult to quantify and and give data on it, but but generally we do see, you know, when uh. When um. A development like this comes in, it it, as I say, um. That uh a rising tide floats all boats, everything sort of rises up. Um. And one of the things that we fear uh with respect to the current CBD and the requirements in it. Is that we create based on a formula. Um, that two scenario, two possible scenarios. One is we build so much commercial space. That it just becomes vacant commercial space. That's not gonna help anybody. The other thing is, uh, the other fear that we have, which. Uh, frankly, wouldn't wouldn't be so bad for us, but would be bad for the town is we create new commercial space and everybody who is in the current commercial space. Wants to move from their older uh worn-down commercial space and vacates the older space and comes to our space. That works for us because we get our our revenue that way, but uh that doesn't help the the um the downtown. And and I think there's a balance there, and what we're we're hoping to do is work with everybody to find that balance, the right balance, so that. We can create that space. It'll be the right amount of space so that we can fill that space, but it it doesn't take away from the other areas. Uh, nearby.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Uh, are there any further comments from council members?
Yep.
Mr. Wood, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Meltzers, thank you for coming in. Is is uh, you know, we should let everybody know I was pushing uh your team to. Appear before the planning board and kind of introduce this project. And before this board to get it out in the open so that uh the, you know, greater discussion, greater visibility could be seen. Um, I noticed that you didn't have in this presentation. The number of apartments, which I think had been generally around a hundred and fifty or so. Um, we had also chatted about uh something uh Councilor Gallagher brought up. Which was our current um ratios of commercial business to residential. Is very low. It's at twelve to thirteen percent right now. Of our tax revenue and during our during our sessions last fall, we talked about the fact that by eliminating the industrial zone. Uh, that that has the potential of even lowering that that ratio further. Um. So two, two questions for you and then I'll I'll let you go. One is um. You know, the Taunton Mall has just undergone a a huge transformation from a mall to. Flat space, and now I hear that, you know, there's a huge amount of industrial uh potential down there, so. I'm wondering why, um, you know, other than we're not right next to the highway here, why uh this particular industrial site. Uh, given its limited size, doesn't doesn't have at least some potential to share in that that. Seems like it's hot market. That's number one. Number two is. If you if you watch the um the Broad Street project unfold, the one up the street. You know, one of the huge concerns in that project was the number of cars that that project would generate, so. So uh, the residential um. Parking requirements is is about two cars per uh per unit. It reduces slightly if you go that ten percent um affordable route. Um, but generally is two, it's it's a, it's two plus uh uh a guest spot every every three, I think it is, so. So you're looking at possibly three hundred cars, so the the question is in the analysis you've done so far. Have you done any sort of traffic studies? Cause that was a huge concern with the planning board on the other project.
Yeah, so so let me start at the beginning, um. Uh, the the ratios that you talk about, uh, don't do anybody any good if you actually don't have um have projects. Uh, so the market really will will dictate. You can't decide that. Uh, I mean, you can try, but um but saying that you want twenty-five percent of this and seventy-five percent of that. Uh, doesn't do any good if that twenty-five percent is not uh developed and occupied. Second, uh, we didn't specifically talk tonight about the number of units because we actually planned to go back completely to the drawing board. It may be the hundred fifty, hundred seventy units that we talked about, but. Uh, based on the feedback we got, we um, we decided that we're going to have to get really creative. And go back to the drawing board and and. Until we have the ability to put together a plan based on uh current zoning that allows for us to do well something. Um, we didn't. Start working on that new drawing board, so if we aren't proposing anymore that pro- that. Uh, that building and that building in front, we're proposing something like it, but something that works for everybody. Um, so all the numbers may change. Um, we liked our numbers, but not everybody did. And uh, to put it bluntly with respect to your last question, and and maybe Jerry, you can talk more to this. The access to the highway is huge. It is almost everything with respect to uh the. This boom that we're seeing, especially in warehouse use. Um, we we actually had our engineers draft up, and I can show you if you're interested, uh. A warehouse space there, seventy-five, eighty, ninety thousand square feet of warehouse, but nobody will want it. It's a Route eighteen is not the right road for it, and it's too far from four ninety-five or twenty-four to work. Um, it just wouldn't fill. That's that's our experience in the market, and we have industrial properties. Um. Here in in Plainville in Rantham uh that are currently uh under um under permitting for those types of uses. Uh, and that's and they're they're marketable and and we're getting a lot of interest in them. Because they're on Route one right near four ninety-five. Um, and this spot is just a difficult spot for that. Um, it's gonna be bringing in trucks in and out. Um, on a on a difficult road and right through the center of your town. Um, which we don't really think is what you really want for the center of town. Maybe we're we're wrong. And I think Jerry, you have you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I mean typically, um. The warehouse users are looking for. A hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. That seems to be the sweet spot right now. And you know, keep in mind that these are. Um, typically serviced by fifty-three foot um trailers, which is. Fifty-three foot is just the trailer, you know, never mind the tractor associated with it. You've got a seventy-five to eighty-foot um. Length, and I don't think that's um, I mean, you've got, you've got a great common, you've got a great center of town. Um. And unfortunately, that's how a lot of these trucks would have to access it. And, you know, I don't think that's consistent with what uh what you wanna see. You really, you need to be near, um, you know. Closer to twenty-four, uh, and as Steve said, you know, we're on Route one, one A. Uh, with good access for our industrial sites.
Thank you. Uh. Are there further questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, um, if I may just offer a brief comment myself, I uh. Uh, I'd like to commend uh you, Mr. LaRusso and Mr. Melsner as well for. Um. Your conclusion with respect to redevelopment of the site for industrial purposes, uh. I I do think that. Two of the overriding concerns that uh the council will have certainly as well as. Other members of town administration. Are parking and uh traffic control. And I think that you very correctly cite the difficulty with uh the main access road there, Route eighteen. Uh. Particularly given uh if it were uh to uh be attempted to be used in connection with a. A warehouse facility or any other industrial use that would call for uh heavy trucking. Uh, so I think you'll find that that is going to be an overriding concern uh throughout the process, but. To the extent that you have, I believe correctly concluded that uh the site may not be appropriate for that purpose. Uh, once again, I I commend you and I am personally in agreement with that. Um, are there any other comments uh at all from the?
I just said.
Yes?
I just wanna, I I don't think I answered it. Uh, I think uh maybe Mr. Moore asked the question. I'm not sure directly, but. Uh, we have had a a complete traffic study done in town. Uh, and um, that would be something that we would be presenting to the planning board if we had that opportunity, if the if we uh got to that stage. Uh, we and we're happy to share it now as well, but uh it shows exactly, based on. On the product and project that we uh we came up with, the traffic study shows the number of trips, which way they're going and. Uh, how would they affect they have on the intersections. Um, I think we would need to get further along with our. Changes that we would make before they'd have to do a uh to redo that study to make sure it matched what we were trying to develop.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Moore, any uh follow-up to that?
Uh, I don't. I think that was actually Counselor Wood who asked that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It was. I mean, if you don't mind sharing it, that'd be great. You could send it to me.
Sure.
Interested, yeah, thank you.
How many people like to read those things?
Well, I'm one of those few people, you know.
Okay.
Um, I can I uh can I ask a follow-up question, please? Um. So, you know, we talked about industrial, but but um I I'll raise it cause it was in social media yesterday. You know, everybody screams, you know, more business, fewer houses and. Um, on the surface, and I'm not saying it is, but on the surface, that's what this looks like, is more houses and less business. And everybody talks about. You know, the big box store opportunity, which many of us know won't happen. You you know, Targets never come to Bridgewater. Don't let out that secret, but there's three within ten miles and you can have it home delivered. There's Walmarts all around us. There's. You know, uh, I I'm pretty sure Trader Joe's isn't coming to town for a while. But, you know, when I look at the site directly across from the other shopping center. If we were to have a big box store, that would be the place to cite it. It's got eleven acres, obviously with wetland and upland issues, but. But that would be one of the few spots in town that it could be cited as a business site. And and so I'm I'm not asking for any plans or discussions that you may have had, but I'm just sharing what I've heard and. You know, from the community around us about about housing versus business. Um, well, and what might happen, you know.
If if I had a dollar for everybody uh who was a developer. Um, I'd be a rich man. Um, and if if somebody has a big box that's interested, we'd be happy to develop a site for a big box. Um, let me put it that way. Uh, this really isn't. Um, it's not big enough for the for the big box. Uh, they want it a lot bigger than than this site can can support. Uh, I look at the shopping center across the street and I see three or four vacancies. Um. That worries me. You know, let's let's fill up the vacancies that already exist in town before we cause more. As far as that goes, and you look all around the state, all around the Commonwealth, and you see. You see shopping malls and big boxes closing down and repurposing and. That's not, that's not. Something that we want to get involved in because all that does is is lose money and causes. Causes a community to lose ground rather than gain ground. But as I said, if there were a big box that wanted to come in there, well, we do it. So if any of those folks on social media have a big box that's ready, give me a call. I'm.
Please do. Thank you. Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Counselor. And are there any final questions from the council members? Seeing none, I will thank you once again, Mr. Melsa, Mr. LaRusa. I appreciate all of your work, and we certainly look forward to working with you a great deal further in the near future.
Is there some mechanism, Mr. Chair, that the that the issue can be. Referred to the Economic Development Committee, or does it even need to be so that they can discuss it? I want to.
That that can be done by by an action that just couldn't take place at this meeting, but we can. We can plan for that for a future meeting. It would need to appear on our agenda as new business for a future meeting.
Okay.
Our next meeting is is in on August 3. During July, we customarily meet just once per month.
Yeah, I guess if if there were. The opportunity to ask for something, that's what I would ask for.
Understood. Very good. So Mr. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Melsa can certainly reach out to my office or Jennifer Burke's office, and we can organize that as well. So we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The time is now 8:13. We are moving on to a second presentation this evening. The issue of town building status update, and we have a presentation from Christopher Hartman. Chris, are you available now?
I guess this president I am. I'm here just unmuting and. Getting.
There we go. Very good.
Actually, I would, Mr. President, I'd ask if Josh could. Could get us out of the Perkins presentation. That would be great.
Yep, I'm trying to here.
If you make, if you take Mr. Meltzer off of co-host. Sorry, you're wrong. It's all yours, Chris.
Thank you. Good evening to Council President and all members in attendance. I did a quicker little progress report, and I'd like to run through it and then. Be happy to open up any discussions or answer any questions that anyone might have. So stepping into the facilities management role for the town. My plan was to establish. An overall maintenance plan and address capital needs for the future in keeping with the town's vision and budget. Plans currently being carried out is making great progress. The plan in place requires information gathering, documenting, researching. Industry knowledge, fiscal awareness, and best industry practices. My time spent with the town. Was to first to establish and organize basic services. To include life safety for each building. And this consisted of addressing. Items such as emergency exit signs. Fire extinguishers, generator servicing. Smoked sprinkler monitoring and other services such as elevators, maintenance. Once these baseline items have been established. We can do that. We could then transition off of that and begin to evaluate and address the specific needs of each town building. And that's where we are at this moment now. Since supporting industry components that we've put into practice. Our facility organizing, which consists of implementing and organizing services. Vital to supporting the building's needs. Such as listing components in their current states of condition. Understanding components of each building. Is. Is a big, a big issue. Along with this comes the building's age and the demands that are put on each building. Building a vendor list. Of reliable vendors familiar with the components of each town building is vital to the future. The existing vendor list. Has been augmented to incorporate new vendors that are reliable. And staying within keeping of the town's vision. Budgeting. Is a major component as well. Maintenance budget has been established. Capital projects have been reviewed and are currently being refined to stay in keeping with the existing budget. Exposure to the 2021 budget process has allowed for better planning for future projects. And has helped me to address preventative maintenance that's taking place throughout the year in each specific building. Emergency response. Has been solidified. And in the past, in the past 12 months, we've seen a total of three emergencies. So far that have been addressed. This is to include the police department water leak that happened in the middle of winter. Academy losing heat. And a sewage line backup causing gray water to back up into the basement. Having emergency on-call services and vendors in place. Has helped to respond effectively and efficiently to these issues as they arise. Cost control has been a major factor as well. Understanding marketing costs and keeping in line with. Keeping in line with marketing costs and monitoring the work that is delivered is vital to. Maintaining the buildings. Work orders. Have been established and are consistently used on a day-to-day basis. Every maintenance request. Or task is recorded in a work order. Work order is opened and closed accordingly, and it's used to track the progress of every task that takes place. Work order can range from a light bulb change to an emergency call. Standard repairs, preventative maintenance, inspection repairs, reactive maintenance, and predictive maintenance. Are all categories that have found their way into a work order to date. They're really the main driving factor, the main driver behind what and how how items get accomplished within the town. Work orders are identified either by a phone call, email, property walk, or inspections by myself. State, state reps. Or or other employees that are operating within the town's buildings day to day. To date, close to 100 work orders have been created and are currently in a various state. From actively open, completed, closed, and catalogued. A few work orders to date. Just to highlight a few have been roof leaks. At the highway and library. HVAC condensate neutralizer replacement to maintain. Components of buildings, new LED lighting at the police department. Emergency leak repairs. To include carpet, wall, and ceiling replacement. HVAC follow-up. To ensure safety measures such as freeze stats and damper controls are in place and working properly. Professional vent cleaning. Drain repair, emergency clog remediation. Water heater fitting leak repairs. Sewer ejector pump preventative maintenance. Exterior and interior door maintenance. Standard things like filter changes. Timer repairs on outdoor lighting in the common and other buildings. Garage door repairs that are vital to. A lot of the buildings to include the fire department, police station. Code compliance within the police station. Specifically in the detention and holding cell areas. Breaker panel replacement, window repairs. Air handler blower fan maintenance, electrical meter replacement. And fire services code compliance, such as that's taken place at the fire station. Just to transition to the other component of of our plan being capital plan. And in conjunction with. Maintenance budget, capital planning is being addressed and incorporated into the overall town plan. Some identified capital improvements that are listed below. Are currently the focus. For some of the future plans to come. Currently, we're Academy's exterior paint is being addressed as well as Old Town Hall. Heating system upgrades in various buildings. Windows, carpeting, HVAC roofing. Between library, senior center, and Old Town Hall. Academy side door replacement to better facilitate ADA requirements. A solar exploratory has been open for the police department. And garage door replacements at the fire station. As well as senior center upgrades. A lot of what I've mentioned. Is. Is being addressed and has plans for for the future to be addressed as well. Looking towards the future. Our plan. Has been to to better address facility needs. By incorporating new tools. One tool that we've invested in and we're looking forward to using more efficiently. Is a facility software in Dude Solutions. Dude Solutions being. The name of the software, a little. Odd name, but it's pretty well known. And from everything that's. That we've explored with it, it's it's a great fit for the town. Using that software. Will be able to refine our plans and our approach to facilities management. And move towards a more predictive model of. A facilities management. Currently. We're in a little bit more of a reactive state, and that's not really where we want to be. We're addressing things as they arise. And we want to really predict and. Address maintenance before it comes up. So that's the goal. Software will help help us centralize and incorporate all our activities within the port town's portfolio. By providing condition assessments of every building. Which basically consists of almost a. Like a grade, A through D, we'll say. And a breakdown of. How that grade came about for that building. It'll also help us streamline and track work orders more efficiently. And one of the biggest components is it'll help provide metrics essential in budget decision-making. These features and many more will combine to give a structured approach. To when and what gets addressed in a building. And it'll help us to prolong the life of not only that building, but the equipment that maintains that building. Servicing can then be better allocated in order to further that life expectancy. And we'll have a better understanding of how and when. Components will need will need to be replaced. I put together a quick little slide. And let me see if I can pull it up real quick, and I'll just ask Josh if I could. Share my screen with you all. So my slide. I'm sharing a PowerPoint presentation now if everyone can see it or if anyone can confirm if it is up.
It is.
Yes, we do see it.
Okay, great. Again, it's just real quick, but I did want to share just a few pictures. Of some of the work that's been done or been addressed over the past few months and a few samples of. Of some reports and. I'll just jump right into it here, actually. So this is a water leak that occurred at the police station. You know, the. Two BAV boxes. Spreading leaks when. The air handler wasn't calibrated correctly in order to account for. Temperature drops outside and when temperatures drop, temperature drops. To dangerously low level in. In February. The system took in more cold air than than it than it should have, causing pipes to. Freeze burst and flood out a good section of the police department there. Garage doors at the fire department that get used continuously. Are lacking proper safety measures such as the cord that you can see here with the. Yellow caution tape attached. It actually attaches to a safety line that if the door is closing on someone. And someone's beneath it or a piece of equipment's beneath it, it'll automatically stop, similar to. Maybe garage doors that you've seen or you have where they have. Safety messers such as the laser at the bottom or something like that to stop the door from closing essentially. Was found a lot of them weren't functioning, and that really just kind of opens up to. To preventative maintenance that needs to take place as well as just. Overall maintenance of the doors, seeing that they are used so frequently and and they're they're vital really to. To the to the buildings that they are attached to. It's just a quick, simple picture, but again, when I snapped when I was replacing. This lab, this light light switch actually, which is actually an outdoor switch to. The salt dispensers down at the highway department again in the winter. It just it had corroded to the point of no return. It wasn't functioning and. Even though it seems something something as small as a switch. Can hold up the the operations of the highway department because now they're taking longer to load salt into the trucks. And slowing down their overall operations. So just kind of wanted to. Throw that in there just to show that really something small really can have a big impact on the overall town's. Throw that in there just to show that really something small really can have a big impact on the overall town's operations here. Here's just a picture of some damage that neglected. Cocking uh cocking of a window caused in the library here. Up on the roof, there's a uh there's a picture window above one of the stairwells uh leading up to the second floor of the library. Um it just hadn't been addressed in years and it caused um. Eventually gave way to a leak which caused a significant amount of damage to the this interior of the library and just. Really degrades the the usability and and the um health and safety of the the building overall. And just to kind of transition, I was a. I wanted to upload one uh an actual work order that I had um created off of basically an Excel template. I was having some technical difficulties, so I did throw this up here, uh which kind of outlines the general. Fundamentals of the work orders that that I use really here. It's a description of the the vital, the main component really is addressing. What the uh work is and then how it was completed and then obviously dated. Where it was done and by who. In that way, it's really something that we can uh reflect back on. For for historical data and and. And better. Address the components of these buildings here. Um looking forward, this is um. One of the features of uh similar to what dude solutions will provide us. Rent of maintenance schedule, which is something that I incorporated myself. Um this is really just. Taking it to the next level. Where I was working off of uh an outlook calendar and best practices and really a a homegrown approach. Dude solutions will help to um shore that up and provide. Basically reminders um and just better overall planning for every. Component of a building here. And uh it'll just really improve the overall responsiveness here. Apologies that this uh the slideshow is a little bit short. Uh what I did want to and I'd like to share. Uh in the in the near future, again, if we're able to meet um some other features of dude solutions here. One big part of it is uh replacement reserve planning um and really what that is is. Is taking. Quantifying when and uh putting a a life expectancy on components of a building. Uh in that way, we can plan for the future better uh by knowing that. Say an air handler will need to be replaced within five years uh on, we'll just say. On the at the police department. Uh that way we can take. What we know is coming up and take a. Uh a harder look at that air handler specifically and say that, you know, we're coming up on life expectancy. What is uh what's been the um? The overall maintenance to that air handler and do we really? You know, it it just opens that discussion of does it need to be replaced um and puts the focus on that. Specific component for that um upcoming year. So some exciting things to come. Um one other feature that uh bears mentioning is a a condition statement. Um I think I mentioned uh in the beginning, but it's um. A systematic condition summary of every building, which um I'm kind of looking forward to and I think a lot of. You folks are really already familiar with the town buildings and I think anyone driving by. Old Town Hall can can tell that Old Town Hall isn't uh not in the same condition as the academy building. However, um drilling down and getting a more uh in-depth report. And of the conditions uh and where we stand with that building is um with this. Something I'm looking forward to. Um another great feature of this the software is that it's it's scalable, so. When plans uh for, you know, materialized for the uh. Memorial building and when that comes online, we'll be able to incorporate that seamlessly into. Into the software and um and and track its track its maintenance and. Just be able to better uh maintain that asset overall, so. So that's all I have currently to present right now. There's obviously been a lot more work and thought and planning. Uh that's gone into um. That's uh that's been done to date, but um. And I'm happy to share more with with you with you at any point, but um. Love to open up to any questions or uh anything that anyone would like to add.
Well, uh thank you, Chris. I I appreciate your presentation and uh just from my uh from my point of view, I think that. Preventive maintenance is certainly going to be uh the most necessary component. That we need to adhere to uh with respect to our uh town infrastructure and. So I think you you've certainly hit on an important point there. I will uh ask if there are other members of the council who have questions or comments for you at this time.
The president?
Yes, um Consul Susa, thank you.
Hey, through you to uh Mr. Hartman. What percentage of all of these items that you listed are being done by town employees?
Oh, well, that's that's a great question. Um it's really on a case by case basis. Although I'm more than capable of addressing minor plumbing issues. Um there there comes the the uh issue of of liability and licensing. Um and that's just one quick example that comes to my comes to mind. So it it's, you know, in that. Example actually materialized in the fire department, we I replaced a uh a water, a leaking water spigot. Uh in the garage bays. Um again, more than capable of doing it, however. It's a town's asset um and there's liability and there's there's professional licensing involved, so. Um in that case, you know, plumber was called in. Um work was monitored by me, um but it was executed. By a licensed professional. So and that's really the the approach that I take across the board. I can. I have enough industry knowledge that I can evaluate the issues. And apply the uh necessary. And address it as as needed um to resolve it.
One more question. Um how many town employees do you have working on directly under you through your program?
Uh it it's me, myself and I at the moment, sir. Um I do tap into.
It's it's town records. I could check it out.
I understand that.
I mean, I I was told different.
Well, I I am uh on on paper, I'm a I'm a I am a department of one. Um however, that hasn't stopped me from. Um using really every every available resource that I that I have, whether it's um for uh, you know. Advice or um or guidance is really. You know, again, every issue is different, so um if if I can uh find someone. Uh a town employee that uh has a little bit of a. Uh expert input, um then I'll I'll definitely seek that out and and I'm always. Trying to stay pretty vocal with uh with all the town employees and really that comes with the territory. Walking into the highway department. Um you know, it's that's there's a directive there already, so I want to always. Confer with him and and let him uh and be vocal about, you know. Why I'm there or, you know, what's going on. Um it just uh, you know, there's always a little bit of uh Q and A going on. You know, on the day to day operations.
Most of what's on his list are all going to be people hired from the outside to come in to accomplish them. The I I can understand that some parts of that, okay, like the maintenance of the systems and all of that. You need the expertise and you need people, but then there's also looking at our buildings. There's a lot of small, simple things that have been neglected over the years and really need to be done. And and what kind of a timetable do you have and what kind of dollars do we have even to start these things? You know, that's that's part of the question that I had.
You know, overall, um it 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 can seem like a daunting task. Um however, you you really have to look at. At each building as it's um as its own separate asset when you're when you're addressing. When you're addressing these buildings and the reason being is that each building is in a different. State of condition. Um some buildings and and overall, that's what we're building towards a more. Comprehensive and um more comprehensive approach. Um so that we're not wasting time, wasting resources, we're zeroing in on what's important and and categorizing. Uh what needs to be addressed now, what can be addressed down the road, uh what can be put off and addressed later on, I should say. And that's really uh that's really the a major component of it. Um yes, there are a little, a lot of little things that can be done day to day um by town employees. And that kind of dictates um it it opens up to time management. And and structuring a day accordingly and and planning, planning a week even. And that's something that uh I've found is a necessary component. You know. Planning to accomplish a few tasks, one task or a few tasks uh in a day. Um and then, you know, switching gears and um. And uh addressing capital needs or or anything else that uh requires uh. Attention and moving to maybe an office setting or um. Speaking with uh town, upper town management. Um so there's a. There is a lot, yes, sir.
So so I, if I could, Mr. President, I just wanted to um sort of more directly answer Counselor Susa's question. Um we did uh we did add a significant amount of uh building maintenance funding in the FY twenty two budget. Fiscal year, which just started. So Chris uh does have available to him a lot. Uh a lot more uh money to get to get some of these uh jobs done, certainly some of the more pressing items that he's articulated. But it is, you know, but we have, we have room in the budget um to hire somebody. In in building maintenance with which would who would do the day to day and quite frankly, we haven't been able to find that person, so. So we're looking to try to to try to find uh somebody that can handle some of the little things. Uh Chris is doing a great job right now handling the little things uh himself um where he can. So um so we are, we are trying to uh to find that person that could handle the the smaller things, but I hope that answers the question, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Uh are there uh further questions from the consellers?
I would just like to thank uh Mr. Hartman for coming in and giving us this up to date on the maintenance. It's been a long time question from not only myself, but a lot of people and I appreciate him coming in and doing this.
Well, thank you, uh Consul Susan. Uh Chris, uh if I may, just for for my point of view. I think you made a a very insightful comment when you referred to the. Uh what I'll call the the current state analysis of our of our buildings and and I think what. From the council's standpoint, what what might be um most useful to see. Whenever it might be possible to assemble this information, but to have a a a site by site. Uh analysis of just, you know, kind of a thumbnail sketch of what are the major. Issues or problems uh that we can foresee in any particular property. Obviously, it would be useful for a uh from a planning perspective, uh and I think it um. It would help to put the council on notice as to, you know, what might be coming that would require. Particular attention or certainly particular uh budgetary consideration.
Absolutely, yes. I I think that's is uh in I've had a uh that's my understanding having come in and and that's something that. Absolutely working towards a hundred percent. Um that's that's a major uh this um. It's a that's a major focus for sure. Um and and definitely want to. Want to provide more in-depth analysis, absolutely. Uh but yes, that is a a top priority for sure. Uh and that really lends to um. To everything that uh we're working towards currently with um planning for the future and and everything that was mentioned and and. Yes.
All right. Well, I I I thank you very much for that. If there. If there are no other questions or comments from the uh council, I will um extend to you my thanks for your presentation. Uh it's certainly um welcome information for us. Uh it's what we really need to know and uh please feel free to. Uh you know, to address us at any time that you feel that. Uh attention must be brought to a matter. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We can move on to the town manager's report. Uh, Mr. Dutton, if uh you are prepared, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um a relatively short um update for the council this evening. On the Mitchell School uh building project uh work does continue uh exactly as planned and on schedule. Happy to report. Uh anybody that's seen the site has seen the steel uh is going up, has gone up and is. Going to continue to go up uh over the next week or so. Uh some of the uh first floor. Uh exterior uh studying and and cheating will happen in the coming week uh to two weeks. Uh that'll begin uh concrete floors are are being poured uh and and certainly. That's a that's a good sign. Uh roof drains also being installed and there's a variety of other work. Uh which continues mostly uh site work, underground utilities and so forth. Um so it is all going as planned, fortunately. Today, uh just today, we received the uh MSBA um some information back from the MSBA on our draft. Uh revised draft budget, which MSBA has to approve. Um they have sent back their draft. Um and we have fourteen days to look at that, uh which we will do. Um and once that is. Uh uh once we come to some resolution, I assume that uh that the numbers will will be pretty much in line. Uh after all this time, so once that's done, uh we will ask have an actual finalized budget. Uh for the project and and just so the council knows, right now, uh MSBA's draft is looking at. A total project budget that's about thirteen million dollars less than than the eighty point six. Uh million dollars that was voted uh for the school, so that is good news. Good news, especially since we we appear to have a a really quality uh quality general contractor on site as well, so. So all so far, good news are all around. Um there is a will be a topping off ceremony on July twenty ninth. Uh invitations to that have been sent out to the council. I know and uh and several other boards and committees. Uh unfortunately, it's a limited uh ceremony due to some of the COVID restrictions, so. So look for that. That's July twenty ninth. Um and the council should have received there uh each of your um invitations. Uh as I mentioned, timeline is timeline is still good. Uh July uh completion date, July of twenty twenty two. So we can now say um it's going to take about a year to get this thing finished. Um and it's a quite a quite an impressive undertaking uh when you look at what's there now and you think that a year from now it'll be completed. Uh that's pretty impressive, so uh regardless, uh BridgewaterSchoolProject.com is the website for anybody who wants to get more information. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at all from the council? Seeing none, uh please proceed.
All right, well, I will go on. Uh I just wanted to give the council a quick. uh, sort of mid-year uh, update on the goals that uh, you laid out for me and I in turn laid out for uh, for uh, the rest of town staff um, around community development. Um, creating quality housing, quality jobs, quality of life. Uh, one of our tasks was develop a marketing and a conceptual plan for the opportunity zone. That um, uh, based on on feedback we've heard in the community as well as uh, the council's workshop, where we're working on conducting uh, a townwide charrette. And for those who don't know what a charrette is, it's essentially a public input process um, that'll help guide the council uh, on some of the more granular pieces of of downtown. Um, and then, and then uh, as well, have a more comprehensive dedicated workshop session with the council in the fall on uh, on exactly what we want to see in uh, in the downtown. And you'll see why that's important uh, in my next point. Um, developing a finance strategy to implement uh, comprehensive renovations uh, to our infrastructure downtown. Uh, whether it be roads, whether it be sewer or water services, um, or any of those things. Uh, we have um, uh, Finance Director is looking and doing analysis, analyses of other Massachusetts cities and towns um, that have done similar work. We're also looking at the possible use of a diff, which is similar to the strategy we used on Elm Street uh, to finance some of that infrastructure. And as well, we're looking at TIFs, um, tax incentive financing to encourage uh, business redevelopment. The gating item here um, will be uh, to develop clarity around what the town uh, really wants to see in that downtown area and what types of developments could secure uh, board approval um, in a relatively easy process. So, so that's sort of a critical piece of um, uh, that we would really have to develop before we really entered into either a diff or or a TIF, which is essentially sort of a business recruitment um, option. Continuing to recruit a mix of quality businesses and promote existing businesses. We've um, done uh, some weekly visits, uh, done a number of actually weekly visits to to area businesses. Um, and we ask when we go uh, for them to give us, you know, any, any uh, barriers um, that would hinder uh, their business or their business plan or their expansion. Um, and and make sure that they know that they've got a conduit to to Town Hall um, in order to try to eliminate those barriers where where they pop up. So, we've certainly highlighted uh, and consciously highlighted our willingness to help businesses relocate to Bridgewater. Um, and and we continue to try to be a social media presence um, and consistently uh, promote Bridgewater. And I can tell you, uh, it's kind of surprising to me. But uh, but my visits to businesses uh, seem to get a lot of traction. Who knew? Um, I definitely try to um, try to uh, make sure that I I purchase something. When I go to a business, it's a retail business. Um, and uh, I've been very pleasantly surprised. I think I mentioned um, I had some kind of mushroom coffee at uh, at the new coffee place in Central Square, which was really good and quite shocking to me. So, um, so it's been, it's been eye-opening, not only for me, but uh, hopefully useful for the businesses that that we visited. So, so that's been good. Um, working jointly with BSU on Central Square redevelopment, we've had uh, very extensive discussions uh, with BSU on a whole host of different uh, poss- possibilities for, for the university's involvement. And uh, and that's been quite encouraging. Several upcoming projects. Um, we've talked to them about including uh, Old Town Hall, um, sort of the school street corridor, uh, the Borough Ave corridor, if you will, uh, our Parks and Trail system, uh, some potential projects on Summer Street, uh, traffic reconfiguration in the downtown area and BSU's students and professors have proposed a project which would uh, if if done right, I think would help us develop a lot of data uh, which we would definitely need um, when we apply for some redevelopment grant funding. So, so they've been quite helpful in that, that area. Implement uh, feasibility study recommendations for Old Town Hall and identify grant funding. Uh, we've completed the feasibility study. Um, I think it's a good one. We've worked with the cultural council. We continue to work with the cultural council to review that study um, and get uh, council, cultural council support for for uh, the recommendations. Um, so I'm meeting with them later this month uh, on that as well. Uh, we've identified four to five sources of funding um, and uh, and are preparing to uh, apply for those different grant app, uh, grant opportunities um, which are due uh, later in twenty twenty-two. Um, final proposal, proposal for a new fire station. Uh, we're progressing on that uh, quite well. Schematic design is underway. Um, and we are uh, in the process of ordering a wetland delineation of the property that's been identified by the the uh, fire station building committee as as being uh, the optimum location uh, for now. Um, Memorial Building, I think we, we had uh, the architects into the council a couple of meetings ago, but final construction documents are, are just about complete. Uh, we've got an OPM onboard and a bid package will be ready for uh, release at the end of August uh, or early September uh, timeframe. Um, operational and capital budgets to address town parks. Um, we didn't, weren't able to accomplish all we wanted in the FY twenty-two budget. Um, but we do know, we did know while we were formulating that, that we would have a retirement uh, Parks and Rec. And uh, and so we are reassessing how best to provide uh, services, not only to the rec side of uh, the house, but also to the sort of passive rec side or the park side of the house. Um, and uh, along with that, we've reissued the posting several times now for the park steward position. Um, again, similar to um, similar to the maintenance, building maintenance um, position, we just haven't been able to fill it uh, as yet. So, I'm hopeful that we can fairly soon. Um, we've also added um, all the parks' capital needs uh, into our comprehensive capital plan. So, so that is there, uh, gives us some more robust and more complete look at at what our capital uh, needs are gonna be. Um, uh, another uh, sort of, I think I call them strategic uh, focus uh, for us uh, internally and certainly townwide is a more inclusive town government. Um, one uh, task under that was to develop and support diversity and inclusion initiatives. Uh, we put together a diversity and inclusion committee. Um, we've done uh, really what I think is a really good uh, job with uh, recruitment and selection process for uh, town employees, which I think um, has uh, has given us some really excellent um, new employees, really excellent new employees um, in in town. So, so I think by continuing on that process, we'll, we'll continue to build um, diversity. And I think um, once we get the uh, committee really um, going on all cylinders, they'll have a number of suggestions uh, townwide that we can uh, bring to the council or adopt uh, operationally. So, so I'm quite optimistic there. Um, develop a volunteer recruitment program aimed at educa- aimed at educating residents on how town government works. That's like a, a four-year degree, if you really wanna know how town government works. Um, but we have had uh, three sessions, uh, three board and committee recruitment sessions, which really uh, have focused on, you know, explaining just that, how the town works, the importance of of volunteer boards and committees. Um, we've had a number of you, a number of counselors uh, join us uh, with those. And those uh, surprisingly, they, even though they've been, had to be remote, um, those have really um, helped us get, get sort of the towns. Really, you know, the, the good face of the town out there and explained how how things work and hopefully made Town Hall a little less um, a little less daunting uh, for for a lot of folks. So, we also plan on doing um, another couple or several more uh, of those sessions uh, with uh, church groups and and school groups uh, later in the fall. So, so we've had some good luck there. Um, recruit uh, sort of along the same lines, recruit qualified individuals who've not been, traditionally been involved in town government. Um, we've had seventeen newly appointed board and committee members. We've got uh, probably another s- five or six to come within the next uh, couple of months. And so, we've got a really good pipeline uh, of volunteers. And uh, and that's uh, I think, I think in that, in those respects, we've come a long way uh, from where we were. Um, you know, even a couple of years ago. But, but certainly the council is uh, counselors have have certainly created an environment where people, I think, really wanna volunteer and and sort of led by example. So, so I I appreciate that. Um, again, our, sort of our third um, strategic focus uh, has been uh, to maintain compliance with federal and state mandates. Doesn't sound like a heavy lift, but I can tell you um, it is. Um, MS four uh, essentially stormwater requirements. Um, our conservation commission is now the responsible uh, board for um, for implementing um, or overseeing MS four requirements. We've hired an engineering firm, BETA, B E T A. Uh, and BETA has maintained uh, our compliance and and so far done uh, all the analyses of of our outflows, which is sort of a key component uh, and how you, how you test for, for uh, MS uh, four uh, under the MS four guidelines. Um, and internally, we make sure that we uh, sweep streets, which is one of the requirements. Um, we don't sweep them as often as we want, but we, we do meet the uh, compliance uh, requirements under the current MS four requirement uh, requirements. So, uh, complete engineering and uh, for the new sewer plant, uh, that is underway. We uh, are on target. Uh, we have asked uh, the Environmental Protection Agency and DEP for an extension on uh, on one piece of that, which doesn't, should not affect the total timeline. Um, and uh, but, but we have hired an OPM for that project. Uh, the OPM has uh, so far, I think, saved us, even even pre, pre-construction, has saved us a significant amount of uh, money. So, so we're pleased with that. We're pleased with uh, pretty basically pleased with the way the design has progressed on on uh, the new sewer uh, plant for the renovations to the sewer plant. Um, we have also um, secured uh, state revolving fund financing on on that uh, project. For those that don't know what that is, it provides low-interest uh, loans directly from the state uh, so that we're not going out to bond. And uh, and it also uh, annually uh, provides the possibility of principal forgiveness. So, on a year-to-year basis. Which is a huge uh, huge thing for us, especially since the, the project is looking to be about a thirty-one million dollar upgrade. So, so we're looking, turning over all the rocks to to find uh, financing there. The oversight um, for the water filtration plant, um, we actually also, uh, similar to the sewer plant, we've gotten revolving fund financing uh, for that. And uh, the possibility of principal forgiveness. So, the plant is on schedule uh, for a twenty twenty-two opening. And uh, once I get the more precise data, I'm certainly gonna pass that along. Um, monitor the Mitchell School construction. I think you've heard me talk about the Mitchell School uh, enough. Uh, so suffice it to say, we are on top of that. Uh, we wanna make sure that school is uh, is the eighty, hundred-year solution uh, for Bridgewater and not the twenty-year solution for Bridgewater. Um, and then finally, roads and utilities uh, overall, townwide and uh, and developing a plan to finance that. Um, so that is the priority project for our new DPW. We started weekly planning meetings uh, to coordinate this. Uh, those weekly planning meetings will go till um, till the job gets done. We are finally getting a database uh, with all of our interest, infrastructure sort of layered onto um, you know, a GIS uh, based uh, map. Um, that includes street conditions, which I've showed you before, and sidewalk conditions, which I've, I've showed you before. The condition of drainage structures, underground uh, piping, uh, which I've um, you know, showed you some, some video of before. Uh, and then water and sewer line conditions as well. So, so any, any uh, utility, any uh, sidewalk or street condition, all be layered on. Um, and once uh, that's done, then we can start to uh, you know, really make uh, very wise selections and prioritize uh, what what we know we have to get done. We have prior, prior to this, as you know, we've prioritized five streets that we know have severe issues. Um, those include Flag Street and Cross uh, which are undergoing uh, engineering right now. Uh, then South Vernon and the Deerfield Drive area. Um, so all of those, all three of those will be coming up next in the engineering uh, process. But, but those are, those are currently underway, because we know that those are uh, all uh, desperately needed um, fixes. So, I, the road, road and utility infrastructure planning sort of is a good example. I think of of how much planning and detail goes into, you know, these kinds of initiatives and and sort of uh, the same with a bunch of other uh, of the things that I've just talked about. So, I set a deadline, a tentative deadline um, of two months prior to the April election, uh, which two months before would be February uh, to get a completed plan to the council for for your approval and and possible placement on the April ballot uh, as a debt exclusion, depending on on how we are choosing to finance. So, essentially by the end of the calendar year, that means we need a plan that accounts for all of the infrastructure uh, in and on the roads, um, an assessment of the current conditions, much as Chris kind of talked about in terms of buildings. Um, and a comprehensive list of road layouts um, and plans to survey roads without road layouts, solid cost estimates of each of the uh, proposed improvements, unit costs for any sewer, water, drainage replacements, uh, prioritized project list based on the criteria set out by each of the DPW departments. Um, we have to have a plan to complete the engineering on each of the projects that we're proposing in the, at least for the next few years. Um, and then a plan to finance all the work uh, contemplated probably over a ten to twenty-year period. Um, and then we have to build in enough time to be able to really articulate and explain uh, to voters what, what it is that we may be asking them to vote on. Um, you know, so that they have some vague notion that we need to fix our streets, but, but we need to be more uh, give them a lot more explanation, a lot more um, be a lot more articulate about, about exactly what that involves. So, so for us, it's sort of a full-court press. Um, involves obviously the new DPW director, um, the Water Department Director and and the staff at the Water Department, same with Sewer Department, uh, Roadways Department Superintendent and his, his folks. Um, our town engineer, our finance director and the accounting staff, uh, the assessor's office, the building office, uh, the town attorney, uh, outside engineering firms. Um, and then obviously, my office as well. So, so really, it's, it uh, with all those folks involved, it, it requires laddering out uh, the work and ensuring that the departments um, get their work done and ensure that, you know, any dependencies are met and that there uh, really are as few roadblocks as possible um, to to getting the job done. So, I spend a good amount of my time making sure that the, the pieces of the project get completed when we need them to be completed. Um, so that we can end up with a, a complete uh, project. Um, when we, certainly when we get to the voters and then certainly when we actually can implement uh, the plan. So, so that is um, that is what I have, but um, I'm certainly happy to answer questions. Didn't mean to go too long.
Any questions from the counselors?
Questions?
Uh, yes, Counsel Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. And you know, this has been a long meeting, and I know that was a lot, a lot of updating you just gave us, Mr. Dutton. But it seems to me that a lot of these updates are pretty much at the same status they were when they were given to you as goals. Um, and I, I just have a few specific questions. I am troubled with the process, it seems, of when a position becomes available. And you've said it many times, that we just haven't found the right person, whether it's for the building maintenance department or the, or the stewardship position. So, I don't, I don't know, maybe I don't need to know. So I don't, I don't know, maybe I don't need to know what the process is that goes on behind the scenes. But it seems to me that we should have been able to fill those positions by now. At least as park steward positions, we've been talking about that for a long time. And I guess the question I would have is, as far as promoting Bridgewater business-wise, what specifically have, besides visiting the newer businesses, is what specifically have you in the in the economic development directed done to, you know, showcase Bridgewater with a sense of, there's a couple vacancies at Campus Plaza and there's the vacancies in the center of town where my sister and I, is have you tried to promote those places for potential businesses and what what specifically has been done?
So, so we do try to promote those spaces and and I think, I think some of the challenges we face, and I know, I know it's, well, I'll just say some of the challenges we face, we have a number of landlords in town that that really aren't willing to to address some of the, you know, basic needs in their buildings that that would support, you know, the quality businesses that we want. So, so we've had a number of people, we've reached out to a number of people that have shown interest in specifically that that location on Central Square where my sister and I was. And we work with them, try to explain the process. And ultimately, they they have backed off because they don't, I don't think the landlord is willing to to do anything with the site that needs to be done to accommodate the business, it's the prospective business that's that's going to go in there. We have shared a lot of marketing information with potential folks that call. We get a lot of calls and Jennifer fields a lot of calls in community economic development. We share a lot of, you know, the the market data that we've been able to get through Buxton with those folks, you know, try to point out that the Bridgewater, people that that live in Bridgewater are shopping in different locations consistently and and where those, where there's a critical mass of those people, you know, shopping in other places for specific reasons or for specific stores. You know, we'll, we'll show them and we'll walk them through that data. But it's, it's difficult, you know, quite honestly, it's, it's quite, it's a challenge to try to get businesses, just to sort of come and entertain Bridgewater. They need to see traffic data, which we can give them, we need, they need to see market data, which we do give them. But but they do, you know, some, the ones that are savvy do a lot of their own market data. Sometime it's, sometimes, quite often, it's not as accurate as as we think it should be. But they take that data and and they, you know, run it through their own internal analysis and decide that, no, that Bridgewater is not, not a good option for them right now. So, so I, that's just sort of some of the specifics. But, you know, I'm I'm sure I'm missing a bunch of of things.
What, what roads in Bridgewater are gonna, are on the docket to get done this fiscal year?
I I don't have that list, councillor, I can, I can certainly get it. But generally, the highway superintendent will identify, you know, the critical needs and 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 do those either in the early spring or later after the summer is is over, but I'll, I can get you that list.
The the legislature finally passed the fiscal twenty two budget. Is there anything specific in that budget for Bridgewater? And I'm not talking about prison mitigation or pilot money. Are there any specific monies for the town of Bridgewater that have been earmarked for programs that we're trying to put forward? To grants or any other allocations?
Not that I'm aware of, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there additional questions for the town manager? If I may, just as a follow up to councillor Gallagher's question, Mr. Dutton, if I'm right, I think that the, I think that the, the, the state budgeted money for road repairs is, has actually increased notably this year, if I read that correctly. I, i- is that the case in your understanding?
I think they have increased chat, what's commonly referred to as chapter ninety funding. Usually what happens is that there's a big splash made about increases in chapter ninety funding. But the number of additional roads, it's a formula that's used to grant each city and town a certain amount of money to take care of their their existing roads and can do other things with it, but mostly road based. But they'll make a big splash about increases, dramatic increases in in chapter ninety funding. And when it comes to the formula, we we actually either maintain level or or actually drop a little bit just because of the number of roads statewide that have been accepted. You know, the the increases don't necessarily keep up with the number of of road miles that have been accepted by cities and towns.
I see. Thank you. If there are no further questions for the town manager, then I think we'll plan to move on to our next agenda item, which is legislation, I'm sorry, which is discussions, we have no discussions scheduled for this evening. Are there any committee reports that councillors would like to bring forward? Seeing none, we can move to legislation for action. There is one item under that category, which is the, what's been referred to as the the flag raising ordinance. This is proposed ordinance D F Y twenty one dash zero zero seven, general ordinance, amend administrative code, part three, chapter one fifty seven. And the, at their meeting held on June sixteenth, the Rules and Procedures Committee voted three to nothing to recommend approval as amended. You see before you the draft of the legislation as amended. And before proceeding to disposition of this particular ordinance, I would like to enter a motion to further amend the legislation, specifically numbered paragraph five, which appears on page two. I would like to delete the final sentence of that paragraph, which reads, "The precise hours of flag raising and lowering cannot be estimated or stipulated in advance." I would put forward that motion if anyone would care to consider that.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by councillor Moore, thank you. To discuss it a little further, the, the significance of really why I would like to propose removing that single sentence is, I think it really, I, I think it really represents somewhat of a disservice, if you will, to any of the proponents who might bring forward a request to raise a flag under this policy. Because it would really make difficult the ability of that particular person or group to be present at the actual raising of the flag. This really would have a, I think, a detrimental effect because it really, you know, doesn't provide the the proponents a good opportunity to, if you will, see the fruits of their labor and to see that their particular event or cause or, as the case may be, is being observed in the manner that they foresaw. So my, my motion would be to strike that final sentence that I've read to you. We would need a a roll call vote to consider that proposal? I'm sorry, is there, is there, yes, is there a question?
Yeah, councillor Collobotus.
Yes. Go red head, please.
I'm just wondering, if I could hear the other side of of your argument and what is the, I'm wondering what the rationale was for including that sentence in the first.
Well, the rationale I had in drafting that was to not, thi- this, let me just back up for a moment. This was drafted, if you recall, in early April and that was well before what we have experienced this year, which was the the raising of the pride play in June, which was done pursuant to a resolution of the town council. And I think at the time that this was proposed, when I drafted this legislation, my concern was that would there be the ability at the time and at the place of raising right before the Academy Building? Would there be ample, ample room for a, if you will, call it a ceremony or a few words of of support for the flag raising or whatever the case might be? And of course, we had in June, in early June, what I think everyone in attendance and certainly those not in attendance have agreed, was a very successful, well attended and well organized event, which I thought was just a great testimony to the persons who organized it and who wanted to bring forward that flag raising proposal. So I quite frankly think that we've already proven to ourselves that there's, there's not a particular issue with having a small group present to witness the the raising of the flag. And I think it really is, is really a case of giving, giving the benefit to the proponents to actually see the, to see that their work has successfully been achieved. Yes, a councillor would.
So, so if I understand your point, you're really talking about the initial raising of the flag at the beginning of the week or the month and maybe the end when it's retired at the end of the period, but not the daily occurrence of raising, lowering the flag like we do typically with the US flag, it's, it may be raised once and kept there and then raised and lowered at the end.
That is correct, councillor, tha- thank you, that is corrected. It simply refers to the, and would primarily, I think, as a practical matter, be an issue for the raising of the flag on the, on the day that that actually takes place. I think that by removing that restriction, which I think is is rather, in retrospect, I think is rather needlessly restrictive. And I think that by removing it, we simply leave to the town administration the ability to conduct that activity just as they normally would by the raising of the American flag. They're going to be doing that in any event and they would simply follow course and and conducted this particular flag raising pursuant to this ordinance as as a part of that regular daily chore.
If I could, councillor Chase, just, I I did see that in there. And by removing it, is it, is it intended to say that the council, as part of this process, will be directing specific employees to raise and lower this at certain times? Or is removing it just leaving it open ended? And there will be some sort of policy consideration made by the town manager as to when flags are raised and when they're taken down? Because what I don't want to do is cross, and the, and and I think that this ordinance doesn't cross that because I think this is an ordinance based on policy. So I'm, I'm not seeing the the interjection into the employment aspect of things. But I do wonder if by removing that, it's implicit that somehow the council will be directing employees as to when the flags will be raised and lowered, which would be problematic. So I just want to make sure that by taking it out, we're saying the town manager can develop a policy that if you all have an order that says a flag gets raised, maybe the policy is it gets raised at nine AM on Monday morning and taken down, you know, at at nine AM on or nine PM or whatever, five PM, whatever the hours are on Friday. I just, that's my only concern with the the back and forth. I just want to make clear that taking this out is not intended to say that the council will be setting times for employees to do this, but rather it it will be a policy, hopefully, that, you know, people will be made aware of this.
Yes, and 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 to respond to you, I would, I would agree that, in fact, this was not intended to be a situation where the council would direct any particular town employee in in any respect. And it would be a matter subject to normal town administration procedures. So it it doesn't put the, and I wouldn't want to put the council in the position of stipulating any particular time and, you know, being the time that the, that the town employees must adhere to this. Instead, it should be done just as, as the normal course of events, just as the specifically as the raising of the American flag is conducted. So that's really, I would agree with you, I think that's a valid point you raised. But no, it was not my consideration that we should be involving the council in any direct direction to the town employees.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
Yes. I'm sorry, or Mr. Collobotus?
Yeah, I wonder if you wouldn't achieve the same goal by somehow distinguishing between the initial raising of that flag and as part of a ceremony versus the routine raising of that flag by mere insertion of the precise hours of routine flag raising and lowering. Just by inserting the word routine or daily.
Why are we coming through this?
Well, I think, I think frankly, that the, I, I, I agree with you, I wouldn't want this to be confusingly complicated. I think that it was certainly intended to relate only to the initial raising of the flag. Because that's when I would anticipate that the proponents would care to be a part of that procedure, if you will, that ceremony. And I think that's what we saw in June, when it was so, so well done and so well received, I think, throughout the town.
Right, we certainly would want the public to be well, given good advance notice of of the ceremonial ceremonial raising of the flag, ready particular flag.
And and thank you, that's, that's really what I was trying to, to arrive at.
Yeah.
Other, any other comments or questions? If not, I would, I would ask for a, a roll call vote on the amendment to strike the final sentence from paragraph five, reading, "The precise hours of flag raising and lowering cannot be estimated or stipulated in advance."
Hey, Mr. Collobotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you, eight in favor, zero against?
Thank you very much. I would now entertain a, a motion to put forward this matter for advertising. I'm sorry, to, to, to approve the, approve the amended ordinance as we've just discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. If we could have a roll call vote on the main motion?
We have, can we have discussion on the main?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, councillor, please go ahead.
Thank you. Over, I I support this wholeheartedly, I've, I've procedural questions around it. I don't have amendments to suggest, but I have a couple of questions through you to the town attorney, if I could. In, in the appropriate event section, it mentions the proclamation issued by the town council of Bridgewater. Now, that's often a, an item that the president brings forward, but the council never votes on. And then the idea in the paragraph above is that the town council shall consider the approval of the request. So, so procedurally, is, are, are we going to see? is, are, are we going to see a proclamation and a vote on the same night to approve a flag for, like, well, so that's the first question. I'll, I'll combine a couple of questions. The second question is, would we see that approval in the form of an order? Or would it be something else? I think the measure would probably be best served in an order, but maybe it would be something else. And, and thirdly, there's time issues in that because we can't vote on the night that the proclamation is given. We would have to have a period of the next meeting. And then the, and then because the charter says we have to wait 30 days for a measure to take effect, it'd be an additional 30 days after that, that I think that the date would have to fall. So.
Yeah, I, I can answer. There's many questions built into there. Thank you, Mr. Wood. I, I did have this discussion with Counselor Chase briefly about kind of the procedure that surrounds this because I, I think it has to be in order, right? So obviously, an order is going to take some time. It's going to take two readings and it's going to take 30 days. Assume thereafter, the second reading and a vote, assuming it doesn't go to committee or, or somewhere else. So, so yes, you're, you're right. I think it has to be in order. I think the proclamation could conceivably come on the first night of the reading, of the first reading of the order. And then that would initiate or start the process by which we would follow. But I think, and, and this is an important point to put out to people that want to do this, that this has to go through the parliamentary process. So it, there is time involved. So it has to be anticipated well in advance of their wishes to do this, to go through the procedure, right? Because the only mechanism you all have to make this type of order is through a measure procedure which we require. So I, I think your, your point is absolutely well taken. I, you know, I, I don't know, you know, if, if you want to amend it to, to say that, but I think the, the fact of the matter is there, there's a vote on, on probably night one in a first reading. Then after the first reading, assuming it doesn't go to committee, it would get on the agenda for the second reading. And then there'd be a vote at that time and then it would not be effective for 30 days. And at which time it would be effective and it'd be an order of this council. Additionally, obviously, we'll be crafting these as we go. This is the first time we've done this. We will probably have to make clear that these are temporary orders, right? You're making the order, the order expires. It starts and expires on certain dates. We're going to want to make, you know, very clear in your orders that that is the case. But yeah, your point is well taken. I think it's a process. And, and I think there, there is no other real good mechanism for the council to get involved in this part of the process other than by order. The only other way to do this is kind of a policy through the town manager and the town manager direct the system or process. But you all, you know, are representative of the community. I thought, you know, you, you were taking on that role, right, in deciding what flags are flown and which aren't and when. So you're doing that in a representative capacity. What kind of unintended consequences that may have? I, I, I don't know. But you may have pushed back. I mean, there, there's been comments as, as you've heard in citizens' comments. You, you're going to be deciding what flags get flown and which don't, which can have unintended consequences. So it's a process. But I think the process is as stipulated in, in parliamentary procedure and, and your point is well taken. I think it's accurate. You make the proclamation in first reading on the first night and then you go through the process.
So would, would an amendment then be in order to, like, between sentence one and two of that paragraph where it says the town council will consider maybe in between the approval shall be in the form of a temporary order following normal parliamentary procedure?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's great. I mean, I, I think the, the more clear you can be with people about the length of time this process is, the better. So that people are educated about it and they know, you know, what they have to do to, to get this on the agenda.
So I'll make, I'll make that a motion to amend.
Mr. President, before we go back, can I ask a question?
Yes, please go right ahead.
Due to the town attorney. So within the paragraph before section two, it says the town council will consider approval of the request in accordance with all rules and procedures applicable to the matter before the town council. Doesn't that cover exactly what we just talked about? That is the process and we would have to go through that without having to amend it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, Mr. Chase, that was his point to me actually in a conversation we had earlier. This, this had, I actually had anticipated this and, and we had this discussion earlier on that very issue. You probably are covered by what it says in the request procedure that's laid out. If, if you want to fine tune it, you absolutely can. But I, I think, yeah, I think there is something that does essentially say, listen, that you, this has to go through the normal procedure and it's not going to happen in any time less than 30 days, right? It says that explicitly. So yeah, I think there's some, there's some notice out there, right?
And conceivably in the future, that process could change. And if we, if we make this a little too specific, then not only would that change occur, but then we'd have to go into this and change it to align it. If we leave it as that statement, we will follow the process that is in place. I personally think we're covered without having to, to add that amendment.
Well, I think your, your problem covered. I think, you know, I, we would have to tell anyone that came forward. This is the process by which orders, you know, are, are heard and decided by the town council, which we would do as, as a, you know, the administrative staff and, and so on and so forth. But I, I think, yeah, I mean, I think it's highly unlikely the procedure will ever change because I don't know how this body could function but for the parliamentary procedure that's in place. But it could. You're right. I mean, I, I never say never. So I, I think certainly you could, you could leave it. If you wanted to be a little more explicit, you could amend it. I don't think there's a, a right or wrong answer in this context. I think either would be fine.
Well, i- if I may, and we're debating an amendment without a second, but that's okay. So, so the clarity, this is going to appear in the administrative code, which is available to all, correct? And so I think the clarity helps establish that the procedure as defined under the, the council process is, is by order. I don't disagree with Counselor George's item here that it, you know, just following the procedures. But it's not clear to the common reader, especially when the paragraph above says the request appeared to display may commence no sooner than 30 days following the receipt of the request by the town council clerk, which would be impossible following our, our process. It would be no sooner than, say, 45 days or maybe 60 days out. If no one wants, then it won't go anywhere. If someone seconds it, then we'll vote on the amendment.
You know, I, I, I do agree with you. I think, counselor, that the, and, and it's kind of reflected just in the history of this particular proposal to begin with because it actually was introduced in, in April, early in April. And, you know, here we are in, in mid-July, in, in a sense, just getting to it. But the point being that any particular occasion upon which the council would be asked to grant this ability to raise a flag for any, any proponent who would bring that forward, I think the golden rule would be to allow more than ample time. In other words, there's nothing that would prohibit, let, let's say for the case of a June event, someone from the public in, you know, in March from coming forward to the council to begin the process. So as to allow adequate time.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We don't have a second, right? Then I move that we vote on the original.
Well, okay. On the, on the main.
What we had just before this new amendment was made. What were we looking at? The, your, the your amendment or we back to the original with the amendment already approved? Which one we have?
Well, what's before us now is the.
What's before us now has not been second. Therefore, we shouldn't even be discussing it. Right? So now let's put that aside because we have no second. And let's back up one step.
Okay.
Was an amendment made? Was that amendment made second?
That amendment was, that, that amendment was allowed. The last, correct. The last amendment was allowed. Now we're on a motion to approve with the amended, the allowed amended version. That's where we stand.
Correct. So now I'm calling for a vote on that.
Okay, there's a motion to move the vote. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
It's been seconded.
Very good. We will have a, we will have a roll call vote on the motion as it was amended this evening.
Hey, Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes?
Yeah.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against?
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we would consider a motion to move to advertising? Seeing none, I would make a motion to move to advertising for this measure. And seconded. Thank you so much. Could we have a roll call vote on that motion?
Yes. Mr. Colin Botes?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
So, President, I'm sorry. I must have missed something. Did we just vote to send it to advertising?
Yes.
No. But we voted to approve prior to sending it to advertisement.
We've done that.
As amended. Now it's going to advertise.
Right. We've done that as.
Oh, we, right. So we have to go to advertising before we can vote to. We voted the amendment ahead.
So we put the cart before the horse. Okay.
Right. You needed to vote, correct. You needed to vote to approve the amendment, then you needed to vote to send to advertising.
Right.
Which I believe we did.
We did not vote to approve the, the item as, as written, has to go to advertising, come back.
Correct.
Can approve it.
That is right. Correct.
Well, then, so that is what will go to advertising.
That, it, the motion, we'll, we'll call the motion to amend approved twice. And the motion to go to advertising approved. And so we'll go to advertising now.
Okay. All right. I thank you.
And, and so just to be clear, there is a final approval step to this, once it comes back from advertising.
That is correct.
Yeah, the vote to approve with Nolan Boyd.
It's, well, it's essentially moot. Yep.
Okay. We have no old business. We have new business. Ordinance D. FY twenty-two dash zero zero one. Prohibited sale of 100 milliliters or less alcoholic beverage containers brought forward by counselors Souza and Gallagher. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it and send it to committee.
Well, we can approve it.
To send it to committee, but to send it to committee.
Is that, is your intention to send that to the Rules and Procedures Committee?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. And that will require a roll call vote.
Can we discuss it? Can we discuss?
Let's open up for discussion.
We, we can discuss, yes.
Might as well. We've got to try to get three hours in.
Okay.
Where's the usual guy who sits here?
All right. What we wanted to do here is to show that we are not anti-business. But myself and Dennis have gone out on many, many trash pickup in this town over the past five years. One year we missed because nobody went. And one of the things that we find, not only ourselves, but all the other people who go, is hundreds and hundreds of little NIPS everywhere you walk in this town. Okay? And it's just disgusting. We all know that there's been legislation up there for years. They're not doing anything about it. Our own state rep, when I asked him about it, his remark was, what next? Water bottles? And he walked away. So we felt that maybe doing this, we would get the liquor store owners and distributors together to say to the legislature, get off your butt and pass one of those bills so we can sell this again. One of the local liquor store owners emailed me and told me that approximately 30% of his business is NIPS. That's why we're seeing so many of them all over the streets. Now, we go out and we walk this area and we may find three or four soda cans. People aren't throwing them out. Or other people are picking them up. I know right by myself here, there's an old gentleman who walks down the street once in a while with a plastic bag. He picks up any soda can, which is very rare, but he does it and he walks all the way downtown and back. Gets his exercise. So we need to see, we couldn't do it on our own. They're not doing anything. So now we're going to see if we can get enough cities and towns to put this language in as well to get them to go to the legislature and say, it's time. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Gallagher, do you have comments?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. President, just make sure I'm not muted. Yeah, this, this ordinance is not about consumption. That's a whole separate issue. This is about litter. And it is about the times that we spend as a community out there cleaning up our, our town in the spring to get it ready for the summer and the issue of nip bottles being thrown everywhere. I don't blame the business owners. It's not their fault. But it is an issue in every community in Massachusetts. Some communities have already taken dire measures to alleviate that problem. What would solve this problem tremendously if, if there were a, a deposit on the nip bottles? So there could be some sort of revenue collection process. And maybe less of them would get thrown out. This isn't about trying to hurt our local businesses who have been hurt a lot this past year. It, it certainly is about litter. And hopefully this goes to the Rules and Procedures Committee tonight. Certainly, I'm willing to open up and listen to alternatives of what can be done to alleviate or stop this before we take a final vote in a few weeks. As this sits in committee, I hope the business owners that have expressed concern about this, voiced their concerns to the Rules and Procedures Committee of what potential alternatives we could do to try to alleviate this problem. But it's not just a Bridgewater problem. It's a problem throughout all of Massachusetts, the state, and we, we really need to address the, the litter problem of NIPS being thrown out of windows and so forth. So that's really the purpose of, of this. It's not about consumption. It's, it's about the litter problem.
Thank you very much. If are there other comments that yes, Counselor Perry?
Thank you. To either Counselors Gallagher or Susan, do we know how many other towns in the state right now have something similar to this going or in place right now?
I was told it's about a half dozen already, including the town that our town manager lives in. But there are a number of them looking into it as well. Okay, and, and we're hoping that so, some of them are just out and out ending it. There's no if, ands, or buts about it. You just can't sell them. You see, Oz changes that. It, there's a, what's built into Oz is a, a plan that could get them back selling them. Now, you know, I, I talked, there could be a little amendments when it goes to the committee as far as the number of days and stuff. And, and we can work on that there. Uh, and, and we can work on that there, but the, the thing is. We're being fair to them, see, the other towns just said no, and that's not what we wanted to do. Okay, um, and, and like I said, there are a number of them who already have, and there's a lot more looking into it and, and we're, it's in the works in a number of other towns. Uh, but not like.
But six so far have a, have a, have a ban in place on these?
As far as I know, I, I was told it's about five or six of them have already done it. Okay. Including, uh, Falmouth. And they were one of the first that did it, okay, and, and we're just trying to, we don't want to stop it completely. Like they did. We're trying to find a solution to solving the litter problem. And Oz will do that, because once the legislature passes it, and, and it's not that the legislation don't have it, they have bills up there. For years now, almost four years ago, the first one was put before them, they just haven't acted on it.
Thank you. Uh, yes, councillor Moore?
Yeah, I, I want to make sure, I, I guess I just sort of heard a stat correctly, so I, I think what we're saying is we're about to pass a law. That will remove thirty percent of the revenue for local businesses. I also see these on the side of the road, I see the litter. I've seen other towns make the change, some for litter, some for public drunkenness, so I think the motivation in other towns might be different. But, but I would just, I, I feel like this is something that is like pulling the big lever on the problem. In a way where there's a, there's a serious. So, so maybe I would just want to hear a little bit more about alternatives we've considered. You know. I- instead of kind of like this, this action, if, if there are any.
I- if I may, Mr. President, one of the liquor store owners who contacted me. Suggested that maybe we go to a hundred and twenty days, this will give the legislation a little more time. To do what they haven't done in the past four years, because they, they, they're aware of the problem themselves, okay? They, they're not blind to it, they know it's happening, okay, and they would like to see it, because when they live in the towns, they drive every day. They would like to see it end, and they, this particular one said if we went to a hundred and twenty days, we'd have a greater chance of getting. Two things, one, one, we'd get a better chance of getting legislation because they may back us up on it, because they know they're going to come back and be able to sell it. And a hundred and twenty days will give them a chance, once it's passed, to sell their inventory that doesn't have the ten cent stamp on it. You see, so there is, there is some conversation that's already going on to a, a, a change of what the original is. And that's what the committee will look at.
Thank you. Y- yes, I see, uh, Mr. Wood, I see your hand.
I just have a, a quick question, uh, I'll, I'll direct this to councillor Souza if I can. So, uh, I, I've been reading about the nips in other communities, typically the ban is on fifty milliliters, but you've chosen a hundred. Um, is there a reason for the hundred over fifty? I, I don't know what the bottle size is.
Well, see, the hundred and fifty, what's happening is at one point in time. You'd go into sto- into the liquor stores and it'd only be these little tiny ones or the half pint. Right, a pint, whatever pint I guess it is, and then all of a sudden this little larger bottle started showing up. And that's where that hundred mils comes in, but still, most of them in, I was in the liquor store today, okay? And, and most of them were all the little fifty nip, okay, fifty mil bottles they had. They had rows and rows and rows of them everywhere, but they only had one little corner with that next size bottle up, all right? But we find both of them out there, okay, it's not that we're just finding the little tiny ones, we're finding both of them out there. In fact, I picked up two in front of my yard today, uh, one of each size, and, and they're out there.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, actually, I think, uh, councillor Moore, did you have a, a comment or question?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Perry?
Thank you, uh, just to play a little devil's advocate here, obviously, you know, it's, there's a lot of different sides, I think, to this coin. Uh, you know, now, you know, the potential is now if you're not selling, you know, potential bottles of this size, now the only access people are going to have. Uh, to larger bottles, so if a person purchases a larger bottle, has access to drink more. Does this increase your possible public safety situations and, and more potential for drunk driving and things of that nature, at least with a. Smaller access to smaller, uh, bottles of this material, people might not drink as much and therefore. Uh, you know, not be as inebriated, you know, well, around town, walking, driving, you name it. So that's just one area, um. Secondarily, is there any type of local model bill that we could do? But maybe the liquor stores could charge for this and have people bring the bottles back. Uh, for, you know, to, to return them to minimize the, uh, the, you know, the pollution that the bottles are creating. Again, just throwing out an idea.
It's ideas.
Go ahead, uh, Dennis?
Yeah, you're right, those, um, you know, we hope it goes to committee and it comes back with some potential alternatives that would. They could, um, they could stop it, you know, this isn't, this isn't the law, we're not voting on a law tonight, where something's being proposed, it goes to committee. The one hundred millimeter could get re, come back lowered, um, it could be, you know, uh. A local, you know, return policy, if you will, that you're recommending that. If that works, that's fine, you know, I mean, to, to, to suggest that people might drink more, I don't know if there's. Any statistics regarding that, but, um, you know, because.
If, if I may, second. When I was in a store today, I looked at all that stuff. Do you know you can buy a six pack of a fifty mil bottle of liquor? A six pack? Yeah, there's the individual bottles and there's the six pack, okay, why would they have a six pack there? If you're worried about them buying a little larger bottle and taking it with them, and the stores are already selling six packs.
Thank you. Other, uh, further comments from the councillors? Seeing none, um, I think if we could move to a roll call vote, please, on the motion to. Send this matter to the Rules and Procedures Committee.
Hey, Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yeah.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against?
Thank you. Uh, finally, we have order, uh, F Y twenty-two dash zero zero eight, acceptance of a gift. A donation of fifty-five thousand dollars from Bridgewater State University. And, um, I'll just ask the town manager if he would, uh, uh, care to provide any background for us.
Uh, Mr. President, this is, uh, seems to have become an annual event, uh, Bridgewater State, uh, gifts the town. Uh, fifty-five thousand dollars to be split, uh, in three ways among the fire department, police department and, uh, our roadways department.
Motion to send to the budget and finance and finance committees.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against?
Thank you. Uh, we've come to the, um, citizens' comment portion of our evening, and. I would just like to remind citizens who care to make a comment or, uh, comments that they please. Uh, bear in mind the hour and, um, limit their discussion to no more than three minutes. And kindly identify yourself by name and street. Do you see anyone, uh, in the public, Josh, who cares to comment tonight?
Uh, yes, Carlton.
Dr. Hunt, uh, please, uh, feel free to go ahead. Are you, uh, experiencing a, uh, I think, a technical problem?
Yeah, we, he's, he's.
We, we don't have your, uh, your audio, um. All right, well, let. Why don't we move on? We'll see if we can rectify that, but, uh, for the moment, I think we'll need to move on to, uh. Any other comment that might be, any other member of the public available?
Um, Pat Neary has a hand up, I'm not sure if that's from earlier or for right now.
Okay, uh, Ms. Neary, do you have, um, a comment for us?
I think that hand has been up for a while.
Okay.
Okay, any other member of the public who would care to comment? Seeing none, uh, Dr. Hunt, unless your situation has resolved itself. I can see that you're not on mute, um, but I don't think we have luck there. All right, my apologies for that. We could move on to council comments for the evening, and if I may, I'd like to begin with councillor George.
Uh, no comments for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, councillor Gallagher?
Just quickly, I just wanted to again thank the Fourth of July committee for putting on a, a great event on the Fourth of July with the parade. The, uh, university, um, fair they had and, and the fireworks display. A lot of people were here. As far as I know, there weren't any major incidents, at least I never read about them in the paper. Um, so it looks like everybody had a good time, was a great, uh, day for the town, and I appreciate. All the work and effort that went into that committee, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Perry, would you care to comment at all?
Uh, again, echoing those same sentiments from, uh, Mr. Gallagher, just, uh, thank, uh, the Fourth of July committee and all the volunteers that helped out. And, uh, put on a great show this year despite, uh, the potential for inclement weather and, uh, the last minute fundraising. They, they, they did a stellar job, um, the parade as well, um, you know, great job done by all, and, uh, thank you to all those people. Um, and then just secondarily, um, just want to apologize to, uh, any people trying to reach me via email. I just recently stumbled across where my true emails have been lying under Microsoft Outlook, I had this other page that I thought was the email page and it wasn't. So, uh, my apologies to those, I'm working on, uh, responding to all of you that have sent me messages in the past number of weeks, so. Uh, I just want to let you know that, uh, it was a, a oversight and I was looking on the wrong page, but, uh, we're fixed going forward now. Thank you, that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Souza?
I know further comments this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Moore?
Uh, no additional comments, thank you.
Thank you much. Councillor Wood?
Thank you, uh, I too enjoyed the, uh, Fourth of July, um, great parade and fireworks and the, uh, ours festival. Um, we put a lot of responsibility on, on four or five people to do all the fundraising and organization and whatnot. And, and maybe, uh, after all these years, we should take on a little responsibility ourselves. Um, and, and offer them a little bit of help, I'm, I'm not sure what form that would be in, maybe public safety. Um, you know, find a little space in the budget for that, um, or something else, but, uh, they do a fantastic job. And a lot of people come into town to see our fireworks, so, uh, it, to see the great turnout. Uh, that's it for today, thanks.
Thank you, councillor. And councillor Colin Bodas, any comment? No, is that a no? Okay, thank you, sir. Um, for myself, I certainly would like to just echo briefly the. Comments of councillors with respect to the Fourth of July festivities, I was very happy to see that the, uh. Uh, the parade on, on the morning of the Fourth was able to proceed, uh, uh, without interference by the rain, which. Is kind of miraculous in the past couple of weeks, uh, but it was a, a very enjoyable event and. I do understand that the, uh, the fireworks display was, uh, tremendous once again, and. We've come to expect really, uh, a, a tremendous presentation by the Fourth of July, um, committee and, uh. You know, I certainly appreciate their efforts, I'm sure that everyone in the town does, and, um, and that's really all I have for. The evening. Uh, if there's no further comment from the councillors, uh, we would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yeah.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against?
Thank you very much, Josh, I appreciate your help this evening and we stand adjourned. Have a good night all.
Evening all.
Night, everyone.